That's budget. That's the wrong one. We've got like four different presentations tonight, so. Thank you for your patience. That's the one. Okay, let's. It's kind of hard to, okay, um, so next slide, please. Oh, no, that works. Okay, so I guess because it wasn't on the slide. So, um, Governor Hokel signed a new law into effect that allows us to increase the cap that senior citizens and those with disqualified disability can have their assessment reduced by. So right now, the cap is twenty-nine thousand. So if you're a senior citizen or a qualified disabled homeowner, you can qualify for a fifty percent reduction in your assessment for your taxes if you make twenty-nine thousand dollars or less. The state has says that we can now increase that to fifty thousand dollars or less. So the increase is not mandatory. It's at the board's discretion, not just school boards, but also town boards. So if you go to town board meetings, you will probably hear a very similar public hearing at those. It must be held in a public session prior to the board being able to take action. So in trying to see what kind of effect this would have, right now, currently approximately five percent meet that twenty-nine thousand dollar income tack in income cap or the qualified disability. However, there is really no way for us to know how many senior citizens we have in our district that are homeowners that have an income of fifty thousand dollars or less because we don't track income. So currently, this is what other schools in our county do. We are at the max of twenty-nine thousand, which many of many school districts are. As you can see, Margaretville, Rondow, Sagerties, and Waukega are the only ones that do not have the current exemption cap. So again, this was something that was voted on when it initially came out, and I think it says in the beginning, two thousand and nine. So to kind of give you an idea of what it does. So if we're looking, this is all round numbers, not actual numbers. So if you're looking at a ten thou- ten million dollar tax levy, uh, on on the left side, without the limit increase, five thousand homes, each one, let's say, is assessed at two hundred thousand. That's a, um, that's a billion dollars of total assessed value. You divide that by, um, the ten thousand, by the 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 ten million, by the one billion, and you're basically paying ten dollars per thousand dollars of assessment. So right now, most homes in Ontoura pay approximately, well, on average, about thirteen dollars, fourteen dollars per thousand dollars of assessment. So in this instant, every property owner is paying the exact same two thousand dollars because everyone has the same assessment. If we do put that income limit in in place, we, let's say, we have a thousand properties that meet that new exemption. So you've got four thousand properties assessed at two hundred thousand, but a thousand properties are now assessed at a hundred thousand because they got that fifty percent reduction in their assessment because they met that that income limit. So now you've got the same ten million dollar tax levy over less overall assessment because you're not, because those people got that that reduction. So now you're paying eleven dollars and one, 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 one per thousand dollars of assessment. So you're actually paying a li- everyone's paying a little bit more per thousand dollars of assessment. But if you look, the property owners with the two hundred thousand dollars assessments are now paying two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. But those senior citizens who got their their assessment reduced are now paying one thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. In the end, the school district is still getting its ten million dollars. So I just kind of want everybody to understand, the board as well, that, um, does not affect our tax levy. We still collect the same amount of taxes. What it does is it shifts the tax burden from one group of taxpayers to another group of taxpayers. Again, we're talking about approximately five percent currently. As I mentioned, there's really no way of knowing how many meet that new income limit. So as far as who qualifies, as I mentioned, there's no way to estimate how many homeowners qualify on the income, but it is based on income or a qualified disability. The combined annual income has to fall below the threshold. Like I mentioned, it's currently twenty-nine thousand. The board can authorize to increase it under up to fifty thousand, and it does include condos and co-ops. I'm not sure how many condos we have in the Ontoura district, but you never know. So what the next steps are, the board must adopt. The homeowners that are affected must apply with their town by March first. It then becomes effective with the twenty-three, twenty-four tax bill. There are instructions on the website. Those are the forms for the senior reduction. It's the RP four sixty-seven. For the dis- disability reduction, it's the RP four fifty-seven. As always, we have all the contact information for all the town assessors. Um, and, um, you know, our tax, uh, our 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 tax person has all that information if anyone needs some help. As far as what other towns and schools are go- are doing, since we're still pretty early and, believe it or not, we're still pretty early. Um, Town of Woodstock is increasing it to the fifty thousand. Rondow Central School District, if you remember, was actually way lower. They're increasing it to twenty-four, five hundred. Um, Town of Hurley, Ellenville are not adopting it at all, at least not currently. And those towns and those school districts have yet to make a decision for this year. So it is not something that is on a lot of radars as far as schools and towns. Um, but again, I thought it was important to bring it to the board so that the board could make the decision if this is something they wanted to move forward with, with a twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So the options that the board event has is adopting flat out the fifty thousand, the new fifty thousand maximum income level. The board could decide not to adopt it at all. Or what my recommendation would be is to phase it in. What this allows us to do, for example, if we phase it in next year from twenty-nine thousand to thirty-five thousand, that gives us a chance to see what kind of effect it has. Where is the shift? And then if we realize, okay, we're, it's very beneficial, it's not a huge percentage, but it's helping those people that need it, then the board can make the decision in twenty-four, twenty-five to increase it even more. And then if they wanted to in twenty-five, twenty-six, or any time in the future, change it and go back up, go up to the maximum of the fifty thousand. Just as a little side note, that on Friday, January thirteenth, um, we were made aware that a new exemption is becoming available. This one could provide up to a ten percent assessment reduction on your primary residence if you're a volunteer fireman and ambulance worker. Um, volunteers must reside in the community and have volunteered a minimum of two to five years. This one can also take effect in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The board would also have to adopt a resolution prior to March first. Unfortunately, we were given this information in such a late time period that we don't know what the effect is. So while I think it's awesome, I can't in good conscience recommend the board take action. Again, you always can. I can't recommend that the board take action without really knowing what the effect, at least potentially, could be to the other taxpayers. Um, so that would require me reaching out to all of the town firehouses, finding out how many volunteers they have that actually, you know, own homes and and live in their in their towns. It's a lot of work because unfortunately, unlike most school districts, we have five towns. Most school districts have one, maybe two. We have five towns, two counties, which makes it even harder. So. Um, so my recommendation would be not to, um, not to adopt this for this year, but to look at it and adopt it, look to adopt it for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And that is it. Does the board have any questions? Sure.
Justy Wallace.
First of all, thank you for the presentation and for taking the time to do this this work. Even, you know, it's it's valuable for us. Uh, one question, a couple of questions come to mind. Um, do you plan on doing the work to find out how many volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers are in the town and might be eligible? How do you plan on, let's say, we did not, for argument's sake, we followed your your recommendation, and then, um, I'd want to know what the next step would be.
Right, so I would need to reach out to all of the fire chiefs, so Chief Peters in Woodstock and I think it's Lauren. Thank you, in Hurley, um, to find out. I mean, they have rosters, they know who the volunteers are. So, I mean, I can, sure, I can get rosters from them, we could, you know, and then, and that's, yeah, phone calls, legwork, that's what it's going to take.
The other question is, would there, would it have to be parity between those who are disabled and getting, uh, you know, a, um, the the level, would it be, is it sort of a one decision regardless?
Yes.
Yeah, so you can't split them.
It's odd, no, it's either you 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 meet it if you're if you're sixty-five and older and have that income level, or if you meet their definition of disabled and at that income level.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Ms. Sinclair? I just had one. I know that you mentioned it in the beginning of the presentation, but can you explain to us again what would be the potential downside of of not doing the ten percent immediately for the volunteers?
Well, it's not that there's a downside. Um, it's just that you're not giving that ten percent, um, assessment reduction to those taxpayers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I mean, you know, and again, it depend, and and understanding that when it talks about an assessment reduction, it's ten percent of the value. So you may have a home that's worth two hundred thousand dollars, so it's twenty thousand. You could have a home that's worth two million dollars, so it's two hundred thousand. So it's not a dollar figure, it's a percentage. So it could potentially have, and that's why I'm recommending even with the other one to do, to phase it in because we don't know what the overall effect's going to be.
Thank you, Ms. Sinclair. Anybody else? No? Okay, then we will.
Okay, so in discussion and possible action, there is a resolution for the board to adopt this, so.
To adopt?
The, isn't there, Amanda? Okay, to adopt my recommendation. Sarah had a question.
Go ahead, Justy Lynch.
Um, just knowing that, then, um, when we're, when we are having, taking this decision tonight, are you recommending that we've, that we not include the volunteer?
Correct.
Or what the 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 action we're taking tonight is on the seniors and the disa- the disability?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I know it's on the agenda to adopt tonight. If the board feels the need to deliberate about it, we could do it at the next meeting. The only thing is that the citizens have to have their forms into the assessor's office by March first, so it cuts down on the amount of time they have then to to respond to it. But the next meeting is early in February, so if if there's a, um, a feeling that the board wants to deliberate a little more, you could do that. But then we need to make sure that as soon as the decision is made, all the taxpayers are aware so that they have time to act.
Thank you, Superintendent. If there are no further questions, we will close the public hearing on the tax exemption income increase. Justy Wallace, did you? No, okay. No, I don't have, we don't have to take a vote, we can just, uh, close it. And the Bennett principal, Mr. Bono, will welcome the board.
Good e- good evening, everyone. Welcome to, uh, Bennett two thousand twenty-three. Um, Happy New Year to all of you. Hopefully, you're, uh, still holding on to your new resolutions and, uh, winning. So I'll tell you, um, Bennett is, um, holding on to the resolutions and their commitment to children. And, um, we've been working very hard, um, in between our snow delays and and snow days, uh, to assess your children and come up with our quarterly data so that we can make the proper decisions for the third quarter. Um, Ms. McKenna, uh, has been yelling at me. She's our fourth grade band orchestra director, and she can't get all of her practices in for her concert this coming Friday. Um, it's, which is going to happen regardless of what happens tomorrow. Um, the student government has been meeting weekly with Mrs. Amadeo, Ms. Hadley, and Mr. West, who is our technology integration specialist from Bosse's. Uh, they've been learning about the problem plastic film going into our landfills has created so that they can become experts in this area. At their meetings, they practice teaching and filming a lesson about the problem as well as what can be done to help it. They've arranged times to teach the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classes and have educated students in our building about what everyone can do to help alleviate this problem. They now, they are now looking forward to the possibility of teaching this lesson to the students in the middle school as well as the administrators. What are you going to do about that? Um, the entire process is being filmed by the student government members. Um, and they're going to create a documentary that's going to air on Earth Day. In February, they're invited to a presentation, actually, um, to present their lessons at the Shokin Yes Conference, Conference, which is, uh, the Youth, Environmental, and Sustainability Summit. It's a pretty big deal for them, and we're we're really excited, um, and proud of our student government. Aside from the recycling project, uh, the student government has been very busy. Um, and they're working on projects to help out, uh, the PBS team with the Winter Carnival. They're planning, um, a birthday party for the entire building around Gidget. For those of you who don't know, Gidget is our therapy dog, and I'm in direct competition with Gidget and losing terribly. Um, and they're also, uh, going to be making Valentine's Day cards for the elderly that will be distributed to the local nursing homes. Um, as I mentioned, um, Gidget's birthday. In the week of, uh, February thirteenth, we're going to be celebrating the superpowers of its staff and students while celebrating Gidget's birthday and her superpowers of all the joy that she brings to Bennett. Um, all of you dog and log lovers know what dogs and the positive energy they bring. Um, Gidget knows that all pets can be heroes, even though that does not have a home, even though those who don't have a home. We're organizing a pet drive, uh, to benefit the local SPCA. With the help of our reading teachers, one in the audience back there, Gidget will be asking students and staff to identify their superpowers, understand the impact on others. Our SEL, our social and emotional lessons of the week will be celebration that will focus on students recognizing their own superpowers as well as themselves. Um, we're going to have activities happening with art and also library. Did I see Artis Emba here? Is she back here too? A lot of credit needs to go to her in setting all this up. Um, and then we're going to wrap up with a musical parade, probably led by one of the music teachers in the, uh, audience as well. My only question for all of you is, what's your superpower? Any questions for me?
I just want to say thank you to you, Gabe, and all the elementary principals for the great job that you're all doing supporting the plastic film collection. I know my family is very actively involved in collecting. It's amazing how fast it builds up. It's kind of scary.
I don't know if the custodians got to it, but we actually had about six full-size garbage bags in in the, um, in the foyer there as you came in. And it's a constant battle, so the community's doing a great job, um, even though it's still not enough. And unfortunately, Mother Nature competes with us, and it's it's flying around um, with the help of Kyle Harges, who is our director of Buildings and Grounds. When the ground's frozen, we're going to take the recess shed, and we're going to move that down to the front of the school across the parking lot so it's easier for parents to put it in there, um, because the film, the film is going everywhere. Um, depending upon the wind, and if people don't clean the plastic, then animals come in and help themselves. So, um, it's becoming, it's becoming another job. But, uh, it's it's worthwhile as a former biology teacher. It's it's so incredibly important. Um, if you just Google the billions of pounds of plastic we produce, as, uh, it's 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 a problem, and I've actually challenged the student government and Ms. Hadley of how can we spread this program to other school districts? Um, it's because even though there's a competition going on, and we're in second place in the nation behind some small school in Idaho, um, which is great that we're in second place, it's 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 still not enough, and we need to recognize that for our environment. So thank you for that recognition. Any other questions? Have a great night.
Thank you so much, Gabe. Thanks for having us. Okay, I'd like to welcome the Town of Olive supervisor, Mr. Sefranco, um, and one of our fantastic Ontoura seniors who will present after Mr. Sefranco, Liam Bertaud. And this is regarding the Olive Comprehensive Plan.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Happy New Year, everybody. Uh, thanks for giving us the opportunity to present to you. I'm not going to do a PowerPoint. You don't want to see me do that. If you thought it was broke before. So anyway, I don't know how many people here know what a comprehensive plan is or the status of it in the Town of Olive, but the town does not currently have a comprehensive plan, never adopted one. We tried twice before to do this, and it never was adopted by the town. Uh, so in, uh, we applied in twenty twenty-one for funding for the Comprehensive Plan through the New York State Growth Comprehensive Planning Grant Program. And, uh, we learned in December of twenty twenty-one that we did not receive the grant, but, uh, because of a review of it, we were strongly encouraged to, uh, apply again in twenty twenty-two. So recognizing, uh, the need for this during the pandemic and the vast changes happening to our communities with new people moving here, short-term rentals, land use issues, the value of property is rising, uh, we decided to try to move quickly and, uh, take the, we had some funding that we could do a, what we're calling a Phase One of the Comprehensive Plan. And while we were doing that in twenty twenty-two, then we would, uh, apply for this grant again and see if we got it, uh, in twenty, uh, for twenty twenty-four. And we, uh, we were notified this past December that we did, we were awarded a fifty-four thousand dollar grant to complete the the Comprehensive Plan in twenty twenty-three. So we are on the road to having a comprehensive plan. We just have to adopt it this time. Um, so for those of you that don't know, a comprehensive plan is a document produced by the town that defines, uh, the history, it, uh, and the current state of the town. Uh, we compile archival documents, data on infrastructure, geography, recreation, local maps, zoning, natural resources, demographics, economic development, educational and religious institutions, transportation, land use, and perhaps, uh, most importantly, we, uh, we do a community survey. And, uh, that's to determine what the residents currently like about the town or we, what they dislike about the town and how they would like to see the town moving forward in the future. Uh, once adopted by the town, the plan will serve as a tool, a guide for current and future town boards and planning boards uh, for decisions concerning planning, land use, and policy. Uh, the survey allows the community to have input and a voice as stakeholders in these future decisions. And the Comprehensive Plan is not a legislative doc- document, but an advisory document for these boards to refer to. Uh, however, it does give legal weight in support of any kind of future decisions that, uh, are made by these boards for planning land use and policy. So the Phase One of our Comprehensive Plan was completed in November of twenty twenty-two, uh, with the community survey being a key element of this. The survey was developed by a committee made of local residents representing various hamlets of the town, and we had hired a consultant, La Bella, to assist us in in all of this. Uh, the public survey was launched in August and closed in October twenty twenty-two. Uh, it was available to the public as an online, uh, website, pop-up events, pop-ups, uh, local events, the local library, the town office, and at outreach meetings with stakeholders. It was promoted in the local press, to mailings to property owners, and the town's social media. So after all that, we had the survey out there, and we had great success. We had six hundred and sixty-seven responses, which represents over fifteen percent of our population. And that is considered a very successful survey. I was surprised. They, they say, boy, if you have over ten, it's really good. So we were at fifteen. Um, so we presented the, uh, at a town meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, in, more information can be found at the town website, which is townofolive.org. So I can go over the summary and goals of what our consultant aggregated all of this data and came out with. Uh, surprisingly enough, it's probably things we would all think are pretty much common sense. Uh, based on our questionnaire, the summary came up with, one of the highest priorities was to maintain open spaces, natural beauty, and environmental quality. Uh, we asked the town of the importance of maintaining the rural character of the town, and ninety-eight percent of the respondents wanted that. So that was a pretty, that's a pretty strong response. Only two percent said it wasn't important. Um, the, uh, other key goals and priorities out of this data were to establish hamlet subarea plans that preserve the unique character of the hamlets, uh, to maintain recreational facilities and programs, to encourage development of affordable housing, to reduce risks from flooding, and to accommodate home-based businesses, and to prepare plans for the Route twenty-eight and twenty-eight eight corridors that retain the character of existing hamlets, preserve natural beauty, and accommodate all modes of travel, including bicycle and pedestrian where feasible, and encourage more use of renewable energy while minimizing the impact on scenic views and natural resources. So, um, this findings of Phase One will be used to suggest policy and regulatory recommendations, uh, in the final, uh, Comprehensive Plan completed in twenty twenty-three. That's kind of an overview of it. Uh, I, there's a lot more details. If you want to go on our website and dive deep into data, you're welcome to do that. Do you have any questions?
Trusty Lynch.
Anyway.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jim. Uh, I'll also add that we did mention the survey in a, I think it was an October meeting as well, and encouraged everybody to participate. So I'm just curious, um, what other ways were, was the Town of Olive able to engage the Ontoura School District and its community?
Um, I don't know how much outreach was done in particular to the to the Ontoura School District. I know it was out there. I'm not sure. I, you said you did it at your meeting, but I don't know of any other total outreach that we did. Anything else?
And I'll just say that I think it's it's fantastic. I'm super excited about it and, um, you know, want to be a champion. I just also know that the timing is such that the Olive Town Library is also doing a long-term plan as well as obviously the Ontoura District. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for all of us to collaborate and help, please count on us to do so.
One of the things that we recognized, or we found out from a legal perspective, is once you accumulate this data and come up with some responses in your survey and put it together and come up with the, a sense of what the community wants, you can actually take action and use that as a legal background for that. So at our last board meeting, I introduced a moratorium on large subdivisions in the town so we could stop them for a minute and take a breath and look at them and see if we want to, uh, change the regulatory status of those. And there's things you can do, uh, that we've learned about to encourage, uh, environmental preservation. Uh, and you can also do things that can encourage affordable housing, which we know, uh, I'm sure you know, is a is a big issue in our district.
I just wanted to mention that I know in our discussions, um,
I just wanted to mention that I know in our discussions, we talked about if there are opportunities down the road for some of the properties that are nearby to this Boysville campus, we would be happy to partner with the town and try and have some accessible fields or different space that our students could use. And we would very much appreciate that. And we would absolutely want to partner with the town in, if that's possible, in maintaining field space for our kids.
I think it's a great idea. Can't make that commitment right now. Anything else?
Thank you so much, Mr. Sefranco.
Thank you all for your time.
We appreciate it. Liam, would you like to join us?
Okay, does this, this work? All right. Hi, everyone. I can start, right? All right. My name is Liam Bertaud, and I'm a senior at Antiora, participating in the high school's community mentorship program in the area of community planning. Today, I'll be presenting my perspective on how the needs of students can be better met by the Town of Olive and our school district working more closely together and focusing on goals that can make Boysville a safer and more student-friendly place with a greater sense of community. Firstly, I wanted to thank the school board for inviting me to share my thoughts on the topic today. And secondly, Mr. Ellman and Jim Sefranco for taking the time to speak with me before this and answer some of my questions. I was happy to see included in Mr. Sefranco's presentation the need to prepare plans for the Route 28 and 28A to accommodate alternative modes of transportation, such as biking and pedestrian walkways. I attended the meeting where the town's public survey results regarding Olive's Comprehensive Plan were first presented. The information I gathered from that meeting, much of which you've already heard today from Mr. Sefranco, has led me to the conclusion that the school would benefit by working more closely with the Town of Olive and prioritizing the goal of increasing walkability around Boysville in its district-wide long-term plan. The hamlet of Boysville in the Town of Olive plays an active part in our school community. It is the daytime home of hundreds of students for 12 years of our lives, but it has an issue with this pedestrian infrastructure that makes it harder for students to engage with their town and walk around without feeling unsafe. The paint has faded on the crosswalk in front of the school, and it's placed between a bus lane and a gas station. There's not many pedestrian pathways connecting us to the town, and most of the cars driving by don't slow down, even though it's a school zone. This poses a threat to student safety, putting those at risk that might be walking home, going to work, or members of the cross-country team that just want to run the rail trail. This affects us all. We must start outside the classroom if we want to build a sense of community between the students and the town. Students should be able to enjoy the town's beauty and nature and take in its rural character. However, for example, the rail trail, Olive Public Library, and the businesses surrounding Boysville all feel disconnected to students because of the poor pedestrian infrastructure connecting the school. How can you expect students to participate in what the town has to offer when it feels unsafe? But for that to happen, more attention needs to be invested in our pedestrian infrastructure. Changes in how safe, in how, in how safe we feel exploring our town might even influence this issue of declining enrollment in our school. Such changes would build our connection to both our school and the town, making us feel valued as community members, which would help retain lifelong residents who decide to raise their children here and are dedicated to the community. I am proposing two things. One, as a part of my mentorship, we survey both the middle and high school student population to see what would make the town feel safer for pedestrians and what we could do to encourage walking. I would like your permission to produce and distribute a survey online to high school and middle school students in collaboration with the school administration and my community mentor. This would be the first step in making Boysville a more student-friendly town. Secondly, I propose that in this school district, it considers implementing a Safe Routes to School program, which would be funded by the Ulster County Transportation Council. The Safe Routes to School program would teach students about traffic safety, improve road conditions, and enforce safer driving behavior. It identifies the shortcomings on a road surrounding the school and makes recommendations for enhancement, enhancements that could prevent future accidents, creating a safer community overall that benefits students and residents alike, and encourages walking and being an active part of town life. Other schools in Ulster County, like New Paltz Middle School, Sawgerties Junior and Senior High, and Highland Elementary School, have had successful Safe Routes to School programs, and so could Antiora. Furthermore, the Woodstock's Complete Street Committee expressed interest to my mentor Cynthia Niketin about a Safe Routes to School program, and they would like to share their ideas with the school board about this. On a more time-sensitive note, though, the DOT and DEP are rebuilding the bridge on Route 28 and building a pedestrian pathway that will connect the rail trail to the hamlet of Boysville. Construction will begin this coming spring. I would like the school board's support for participating in a dialogue along with my mentor Cynthia Niketin with New York State DOT about what their plans are for the pedestrian pathway and make suggestions as to how it can best serve the community of Antiora. We also would like to get student input about what they think the DOT could do to make it easier and safer for students to get to and from school. For example, asking students if they would support landscaping and lighting being installed along the pathway to make the area feel safer, especially when it's dark out after school. The information conducted from the earlier survey to the middle school and high school students could be presented to the DOT as justification for recommendations. The survey would provide data and a framework to guide the creation of a Safe Routes to School program for the district, and also provide the DOT with the necessary information about what students want in order to build them a project that meets the needs of both students and the community as a whole. I thank you for your time and consideration.
That was excellent work, Liam. Thank you so much. I know that you put a lot of time and effort into coming here tonight. And I know that we're putting you a little bit on the spot by asking you to be here, but I'm really glad that you came. And I would ask you if you wouldn't mind sharing your notes with the board clerk, so that the board has access to them, so that we can see all of your suggestions in writing. That would help us make a decision about taking action and how best we can support you. So if, Amanda, if you could give, you guys have communicated, right?
You sent me an email.
Yeah. Okay, so if you can send that to Amanda, then we'll have everything in writing. It will help us better understand, and then we can reach back out to you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have questions for Liam, Mr. Ross?
Not so much a question, but does anyone see a future supervisor here? I certainly do. Wonderful job, young man.
Thank you.
Great job.
We would like to welcome Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Claire, back up to present the 2023 budget overview. This is just an overview. Don't, anybody may worry.
I'm back. So as you know, we are entering the 23-24 budget season. So this is really just kind of an overview. We have a lot of new board members. This is also the first time I'm doing it for even some of our, for some of our new staff. Every, every business official will do things a little differently in every school. I'd like to think that I've done this long enough that I think I know what I'm doing. Anyway, so I kind of like to start with, developing a school budget is a year-round process. I never stopped thinking about the budget. I'm just, I just recently finished thinking about the 21-22 budget, because we got that finally, you know, filed with the state. That's done. I'm still trying to figure out the 22-23 budget, and now I'm working on the 23-24 budget. But it really is, it is a 12-month process. And just to kind of show you what we do, or how, how we kind of do this, I mean, it literally starts the day the kids walk in. I'm working on 23-24 the day the kids walk in in the 22-23 school year. Because remember, the 22-23 school year budget was voted on the previous May. So so much happens between May and September. We have staff leaving, staff coming, students leaving, students coming. There's just so much that happens. So the first thing that I like to do, when school starts in September, how, how is it looking in September I that we thought it was going to look when we did the budget in April the previous year? We look at how much money we have left. We look at what we estimated things to cost and what they actually cost. Because as you know, a budget is just an estimate of how much we think we're going to spend. October, we start looking at our current programs, and I start working on the rollover budget. November, we look at the history of the expenditures. We look at trends. Where are we going? What has the state brought down? The mandates. They love to send us mandates. Usually, they like to send us mandates after the budget is passed, but for that next school year. So we have to figure out how to fit those mandates in a budget that was already voted on, and we don't have money for in the budget. December is when we start looking at enrollment. We look at enrollment. We look at the impact of the current year budget. Do we have a higher special ed need, a lower special ed need? We assess non-instructional needs. Are our buildings failing as we start getting snow in the beginning of December? Big rainfalls in September, October, happens every year. Have some of our roofs started failing? And then, you know, so this is when the real discussion starts. Now we're into January. This is really when we start going into the nitty-gritty of, you know, what do we need and where do we need it? Are we going to look at new programs for the next school year? Our staffing needs, our class sizes, are the fourth grade moving up to fifth, are going to be less kids? So we're going, we're going down a, a class, or it's going up? So we're going to have to go up, a teacher have to move. So these are the things that we have to look at. BOCs, our BOCs budget. What do we want from them the following, for the next year? February, we, actually, we look to finalize the BOCs budget. We start looking at our revenue budget, the tax cap, due March 1st. And then we obviously present all that to the board. And then in March is when we get our final health insurance rates. So we know how much that's going to go up, because it never goes down. We do our fund balance analysis, finalize the revenue, and then we present the final draft to the Board of Ed. April is, and this is where it gets tricky. So this whole time that I'm working on the budget, Amanda over here is still doing IEPs, and she sometimes will, you know, call me and say, in May, before you put that budget to the voters, we're going to have to change things. So it, it literally is, it's, it's a minute-by-minute, day-by-day kind of situation. But again, board needs to adopt the budget by April 18th. We file a property tax report card with the state, and then we vote. So there's a lot that goes into a budget. And as I said, it is literally a 12-month process. So when we're developing the budget, the big things we look at is kind of to see what changed versus what we budgeted. So class size, high need students, our transportation. Many, many of you hopefully know that by April 1, if we have a parent in the district that wants to send their kid to a private placement, Woodstock Day, Middleway, if they, if they live within the mileage allotment, our school has to transport them. So we are transporting a private, private school student. We have the budget for that. So obviously repairs and maintenance. Sometimes you just don't know how much things are going to cost to fix, or when they're going to break down. Staffing needs are huge. The, the, a school budget is 75, 80% payroll and benefits. So there's very little extra in the budget. So staffing, obviously, discussing staffing is very important. Review impact of any program changes. If we change curriculum, if we're looking at a new textbook series, and then reviewing facilities. We're very lucky in our budget that we have every year been able to actually budget capital project work. So we, we try to pick something that will benefit the students. It has to be something that can be done. It's got to be relatively small, because sometimes capital projects can be four, five-year adventures, let's say. So these are really more like, so for example, the press box and the bleachers. That was one of our transfer to capitals. That was needed. That was a safety issue. For those that remember how the bleachers and the, and the press box looked, that was left from, I want to say at least the 80s, because it was there when I graduated from Antiora. So, so now we're looking, we're speaking with the facilities committee. We're looking at what do we want to build into the budget that we need to fix? And then, as I mentioned, kind of long-term initiatives. Technology is another huge one. Replacing, replacing computers. What do we want to do for smart boards? You know, where is, where is technology going? Because every year it's changing. So again, just from a, kind of a list perspective, the big, the big hitters, salaries, supplies, BOCs, special ed, transportation, retirement costs. We are required to pay into the teacher retirement system and the employee retirement system for every person that works for us. And then insurance. Health insurance is a huge cost. We pay not only the health insurance of active employees, we also pay the health insurance for, for retirees. In some instances, we pay 100% of their health insurance. But our goals, I've probably had this slide with very little change for I don't know how many years, because to me, this is what I look at when I'm working on the budget. We want to make sure that we have the highest quality of teaching and learning for all of our kids, and that is number one. That is, that is what I do from the morning I come in, into the minute I leave. If somebody calls me and says, hey, I need something, does it help kids? Let's figure it out. That is, I mean, that's why we're all here. We're all here for the kids. So that is, will always be number one on the list. However, we need to balance that with some financial stability, understanding that school, New York State, are funded by taxpayers. So we have to make sure the taxpayers are getting what they pay for by our kids doing the best that they can. Again, I will continue, you know, I, I adjust the budget based on what's happening at the, at the time, allocating the funds to whatever the board vision is, what the board goals are, maximizing efficiencies where we can, which I think we've, we do a pretty, we do a good job down in Central. We, we really, we run a tight ship down there, for sure. We try to maintain reserves, understanding that reserves are important from both a cash flow perspective and an emergency perspective. It's like, it's, it's basically like not having a rainy day fund. How much are you supposed to keep in savings for an emergency? You know, how many percent, I don't know what other percentage is, but, so we try to do that. And then we continue to try to plan. It's so important to try to be proactive instead of reactive. And in schools, that's not easy to do, because we, you know, we're not bred for that. Schools are not bred to be proactive. They are somehow, we end up being so reactive to the things that we do. And, and I'm really pushing everybody in the business office to be more proactive, understanding that, you know, when we have an extra dollar, we want to spend the extra dollar on kids. We don't want to spend the extra dollar on, you know, a new computer for the business office. You know, it's, so it, it, that's, I think, why we end up in the situation that we're in. But there is a happy medium, and we're, we're working on that. This unfortunately is our enrollment projection. And it is pretty clear that we are not going up. We are starting to level off. If I had, I should probably put one from like 2000 and, or even 1980s, and it would be really big decline, and now all of a sudden kind of slowing down. But we are going to be under 1,000 kids in a few years. Another reason why we're, you know, doing what we're doing. So where are we right now? The things that I'm kind of keeping an eye out as I'm working on the budget, contractual costs. Our contractual costs are rising exponentially. Why? Number two, inflation. I don't have to tell you, inflation is hurting a lot of people, and school districts are not immune to that. Energy costs, heating, heating the buildings, gas to get the buses, you know, to and from picking up kids. It's, 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 it's tough. We, we're seeing an increase and a rise in retirement costs. Our teacher retirement, employee retirement systems are tied to the stock market. So as the stock market sees issues and fluctuations, we see an increase. In those years that the stock market did well, we didn't pay as much. In those years that the stock market doesn't do well, we pay more. Another issue that we're, we're looking at is teacher shortage, which is, which is something I honestly never thought I would have on a slide. I've been in this business for over 20 years, and never once did I think we would have a teacher shortage. There's declining enrollment in teaching at teacher programs. Since the, since they started Tier Six, which is the tier that we're currently at in the teacher retirement system, there are fewer benefits. So there's less of an incentive for people to go into education. And 33% of active teachers are going to retire within the next five years. 33%. I'm one of those. 33%, maybe, if I'm lucky. So it's, it's going to be tough going, going forward. So we have to, we have to look at that. We have to figure out, how can we still supply the students with the education that they need, given the shortfalls that we know we're, we're facing? I don't have to explain to you how the health insurance is, the uncertainty of health insurance. I mean, we don't know where that's going. Again, state aid is another huge uncertainty. The governor said that he, she, sorry, she will be releasing numbers to us soon. Usually, we get them around the end of January. We are going to see a full 100% phase in of foundation aid. For those of you that don't know, foundation aid was, was frozen during 2008, nine-ish, don't, don't quote me on that, when we were having, when the state was having its fiscal crisis. So many schools, when they were frozen, should have seen increases and didn't. However, there were also schools that got increases that shouldn't have. We're one of those school districts. Because of our- Because of our demographics, because of our low tax rate, we are considered a wealthy district. We are actually getting more state aid than foundation aid says we should be getting. We've been told that they will continue with what they call the Hold Harmless, which means we won't get less, but don't expect any more. And again, it's based on the fact that our enrollment is lower, and we're considered a wealthy district because of the reservoir. Reservoir pays a lot of taxes to this school, does not send a single kid to be educated. This is also our last year for the CHRISAA grant, so that's, you know, quite a lot of money. And then that last bottom one that you can't quite see is one year left of ARP, which is the other large grant that we received for COVID relief. It's not all bad news. I always seem like I, it's like bad news. It's not all bad news. We do have a healthy fund balance. So this is our emergency, so-called emergency fund. We have $8 million in capital reserve. That means we can do work on these buildings without taxing, without taxing property owners. We have unemployment reserve, so if we do end up having to lay anybody off, it's not going to affect the budget. We have retirement reserve, and that is specifically for that fluctuation in retirement costs, because we have to pay it, we don't have a choice. They tell us what it is, we pay it. So if all of a sudden, one year, they're like, oh yeah, stock market's crashing, you're going to end up paying 20%, we can pull money out of this reserve, so we're not affecting the kids that year, and hoping that the next year it gets better. Repair reserve allows us to do some repairs in the building. We are looking to maybe use some of that money, as we talked about, there's a roof in the middle school, high school, that seems to be leaking a little bit. And then the employee benefit reserve, and that's the reserve that we have for people's vacations, sick leave when they retire, things like that. So we have a healthy $19 million in reserves, which, which is, which is very good. So, and that's just an overview. We'll get down and deep and dirty into the details in the upcoming board meetings. But just for the new board members, if you have any questions, please, my door is always open. This isn't, this isn't hard stuff, it's just get, wrapping your head around it. You know, you're going to hear it so much over the next few board meetings that you're going to probably be able to do this presentation next year, so. Come on Cindy, how many times have you heard it? Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. McLaren.
Could you define CRS grant?
That's the CHRISAA grant. Help me out here.
You don't have to, I mean acronym, I just, can you explain?
It's, oh, so that's the money that, the COVID relief money? So we received, what was it, 7 million overall, I believe, between, between the CHRISAA and the ARP grants? That were kind of one-shot-in-the-arm grants that we were allowed to use to help student achievement, for, to help mental health, social, emotional learning, safety. We're doing some of the, the work for the generators with that. So yes, so those are basically one-shot grants that we're using to do certain projects.
Anyone else? No, thank you so much, Ms. Leclaire.
You're very welcome, to be continued.
Okay, item 5.01, the acceptance of minutes, Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of January 10, 2023. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second, trustee Ramondo, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Ms. Crandell could not be here with us tonight, our student representative, because it is Regents Week. And she sent a very brief update, and it says, "The mental health activities were a success. Community night was well-attended and went great. And the high school student government looks forward to collaborating with the Bennett School for their pink shirt day." So thank you for, Ms. Crandell, for taking the time to send her update, even though she can't be with us tonight. Item 7.01, the superintendent will report district news.
I think one, one of the things that everyone is thinking of and aware of is, as you know, we have six days built into our six snow days, built into our school calendar. At the start of the winter, I did share at a board meeting and also in the newsletter that it was our intention to utilize all snow days as planned, and then to consider remote learning options based on each particular weather event. As it stands, we have used five of our six snow days, and I believe at this very moment, all of the superintendents in Ulster County are texting and saying that, I think Ben Knoll has announced that we're all closed tomorrow. So it is likely that after tomorrow, we will be, we will have exhausted all of our snow days. And thankfully, the administrative team has been working really hard to formalize a plan for remote learning. And I don't believe we have any other weather in the forecast for this week. And I'm crossing my fingers that we don't have any in the next few days, but I did see the middle of next week might have some. So we are finalizing the plan that we have, we will be communicating it to parents and to faculty and staff. And if there is bad weather, and we don't experience broad internet outages and power outages, then we will try and switch to remote learning. Understanding that as Assistant Superintendent Leclaire has reminded us, even if we do have to take days from spring break, we only have four to take, because Friday of spring break is Good Friday, and that is a holiday that we're not allowed to take back. So where we can, we will pivot to remote learning, so that will all go out. At the last meeting, I included as part of the goals update, feedback from our SDM meeting. And at that district-wide SDM meeting, we did not have the feedback from the Woodstock building-level teams, so they did send it, so I went to share it with the board. The Woodstock team thoughts included on the scenarios, that, the scenario that encompasses keeping Phoenisha and Woodstock open and closing Bennett, the feedback from the team was positive about having a K5 community school, but there was concern that Bennett is the nicer of the buildings, condition-wise, and that fewer transitions for students and families are good, and it helps keep consistency for the PTA, and the older kids could serve as role models, and it increases the exposure to the arts at the K5 level. The scenario that included moving to two K4s didn't seem likely that fifth grade would be headed to the middle school. The scenario of Phoenisha and Woodstock, the current scenario, offers diversified opportunities for parents and students. Scenario D, closing Phoenisha and Woodstock and having Bennett be a K5, is liked better than Bennett being a K4. And then, closing Phoenisha or Woodstock and having two K5s with Bennett is not considered the best option. So I just wanted to make sure that I represented everybody's feedback. And then lastly, Community Night was last week on Friday, and it was really incredible. Thank you to all of the community for coming out and supporting our students. Was very well-attended with students, former students, families, and community members. Was a lovely recognition of police and emergency responders. And I would specifically like to recognize the work done by Beth Fletcher, Leah Smith, the administration at the middle high school. Also, Mr. Murphy and his band helped create a fun atmosphere, and the Booster Club provided lots of options for food and beverages, and students were selling their lit magazines as well. And the athletes all did an outstanding job, and we could not be more proud, so.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have questions for the superintendent? No? Okay, moving on. District news, does the board have any district news? Anything to report? How about the Ad-Hoc Committee?
So I'll report on our most recent Ad-Hoc Committee meeting, and this is the Ad-Hoc Committee that's discussing the long-term plan. We met most recently on last Friday, January 20th, for almost three hours, to review the survey responses and determine the World Cafe representatives and determine next steps. In attendance was trustee Story, trustee Ramondo, Assistant Superintendent Laffin, Assistant Superintendent Allison, Superintendent McLaren, and myself. Oh, I'm sorry.
Monica.
McLaren, yeah, okay. And, and Monica was there too. Sorry, so sorry. So we discussed the makeup of the table groups for the World Cafes, and we wanted to really focus on representation from a broad range of community members who could commit to attending all three World Cafes. We received 62 surveys, and from that group, 35 community members representing various community groups, senior citizens, business owners, parents representing all five schools, onto our teachers and staff, onto our administrators, PTA officers, emergency service providers, and town government officials will participate in targeted discussions at seven tables of five. Assistant Superintendent Laffin will facilitate the process as planned by the Ad-Hoc Committee. Antioa Board trustees may attend as observers, but will not participate in table discussions per the New York State Open Meetings law. Central administration may also attend, and like board trustees, they will not participate in table discussions. We reviewed the format and the questions for the January 31 World Cafe and final preparation. Invitation letters were sent to the 35 community representatives on Monday, yesterday, January 23rd. The meeting dates have not changed. The first meeting is January 31st, with a snow day to February 2nd. The second meeting is February 28th, and that one is a virtual Zoom meeting. And the third is March 27th, and I don't think we've dedicated a snow day yet, or snow date, did, do we, 29th? I don't know why I didn't get that. Okay, thank you. And finally, the Ad-Hoc Committee will meet again after our first World Cafe, but we have not decided on a meeting date and time yet.
I think you guys are doing a tremendous amount of work, and I'm grateful for it. And I'm wondering if my colleagues have any questions? So I have a question then. I'd like to, to better understand if, if the Ad-Hoc Committee has discussed a timeline, and also if there has been conversation about how we are going to reach the community as a whole outside of the, the World Cafes.
What do you mean by reach the out community? I don't...
You know, I, I think that, I'll just speak for myself. I think the cafes are fantastic, and I think you're going to get a tremendous amount, we're going to get a tremendous amount of information from them. But I would also like feedback from the community as a whole. You know, in whatever way the Ad-Hoc Committee decides that should be done, and the most effective way, whether that's through a survey or community forums, but I feel like personally, I'd like to see our community have an opportunity to weigh in on this really incredibly difficult and important decision. That's just me. You know, so I think the World Cafes are going to give tremendous insight, but I also think that the community needs to weigh in before we can make this decision.
But the World Company, the World Cafes are what we were, the board had asked, you know, for us to get the community input. So that's why I'm quite, you know, not quite understanding what you're asking for, because the community, we asked for people who want to be involved in this, to please, you know, set forth, and that's the people we came back with the responses, that they want to be actively involved in this. So we're going off of those people. I don't know what more...
Well, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, I could be completely, you know, incorrect about this. My opinion about this could be completely incorrect, but I feel like 35 people may not actually represent the opinions of the entire district. That's, you know, I'm, I'm open to being told that I'm wrong about this, but I, I think this is the beauty of an Ad-Hoc Committee, is that you guys got together, you did incredible work, you are initiating something that is absolutely necessary, and I am not in any way suggesting that, that that work is not important or good. I'm just also saying that I would like to figure out a way to reach more than 35 people in, in making this decision. Trustee Lynch was first.
Yes, thank you, trustee Sherry. I, I agree only because if, if you weren't available for all three meetings, it was not, you know, it would be hard to participate. I, I just wanted to offer, because y'all have done such, so much work, if the communications committee could be helpful to the Ad-Hoc Committee in thinking about other ways to reach a broader group, I'd be happy to, to lead that partnership. And also be help, happy to think about other ways we can work with different stakeholder groups and just brainstorm with you, and so that it's not all on the Ad-Hoc Committee. I'm happy to help.
Thank you, trustee Lynch. And let me just clarify that, in my mind, I guess the way I saw this was, the World Cafe is providing a focus group, so an opportunity to have really in-depth discussions about some of the burdens and issues that we're facing in making this decision. But that, I didn't think that that precluded us from reaching out to the community as a whole and just getting feedback. That could be after we have concrete plans, that could be after we have World Cafe input. I just don't, I don't personally want to take that off the table. I think it would be unfair. Trustee Taylor.
Would it be beneficial to involve like the town boards, to see if they can get their own group and pull that in, so that, just information-wise, we get it from them? So that you don't have to physically talk to each one?
I know that, I know that this went out to many town board members, and that unfortunately, I think we only have representation from two different town boards. So, you know, some of that was incumbent on them to be responsive, but again, if they couldn't be there for all three meetings, and like us, they have a very robust meeting schedule and a lot of responsibilities. Unlike us, they get paid, but, but they do have a very robust meeting schedule. I, I would love to take information and present to town board meetings. You know, I would like us to push into town board meetings and make sure that people know we're going to be there and have these conversations. This decision directly impacts potentially most of the towns in our district. So, you know, I, I think we should go to Woodstock. I think we should go to Olive, I think we should go to Phoenisha, to Towne Shandakan, and have these conversations. Trustee Ramondo.
I just want to say that, in my opinion from the group work that we're doing, we really wanted to execute this World Cafe well, which meant putting in the time, putting in the effort, and coming up with a plan that made people feel welcome and included, inclusive. So my instinct on this, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, is that we execute these three extremely well, and then we have, we have a lot of work to do, the Ad-Hoc Committee isn't done. So I think to create this long-range plan for us, we are, we're just trying to take it piece by piece and do it really well, so that we have information to present to the next phases of whatever we're going to do. So I, I wouldn't say we're done just with this phase, with communicating in general, this is just what we have to do first. So this is first steps, and then we'll take it from there with everyone's input.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's terrific, and, and really, that's all I'm saying, is, you know, that I think this is an amazing starting point. I cannot believe the amount of time that you have all put into this, and I'm grateful for it. I really think that we have some fantastic minds working on this, and I think the board as a whole, you know, people have expressed to me individually, that they would really like to see the community be involved in a more comprehensive way, potentially following the World Cafes. I'm, I'm not in any way asking you to change the work that you've done, I think it's fantastic. Trustee Story.
I also think something that the Ad-Hoc Committee was very cognizant about is that this, this is our current board goal, to work on a long-term plan. This current board ends election night, because we don't know, there's two seats that can change on election night. So we were cognizant of doing most of this work before May. So that was something that was, you know, purposely thought of, because, again, this is our current board, and then come Janu, uh, come June, sorry, July, it'll change again.
Well, I mean, let me preface that by saying that I, I don't want to give the community the false indication... that I, I don't wanna give the community the false indication that if I lose my seat, or Trustee Taylor, or Trustee Wallace, that the district is not going to move forward with reconfiguration, because that's just not true. As you can see from our enrollment numbers, what we're doing is not sustainable. So as much as I would love to be part of that, I don't wanna rush the decision. If I'm not elected, I know that you're going to move forward with reconfiguration. I would love to be part of that. But if that's not the will of the community, then I won't be here. And that's, that is what it is. And I'm sure that Trustee Taylor and Trustee Wallace would say the same thing, that as much as we would all like to be here, if you guys are moving forward without us, then that's what's happening. But this isn't going to change. You know, we are going to reconfigure the district because we have to. Not because any of us want to. This is not anything I think that any of us want to do or look forward to doing. But we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, and we have a responsibility to the children. So this work is gonna get done, whether it's this board or a board with three new members on it. It has to get done. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the Ad-Hoc Committee trying to include us because this was our goal from the beginning. But if that's not the will of the voters, then, then that is what it is. That's just my opinion, but... Anyone else? Trustee Fisher.
Yes, so I hear what you're saying, and I, I hear that you're asking for the potential for more community involvement. And, you know, one thing that I think that we can, we can do to make sure that we have, that we're hearing from the community is publicly heard, because we've got a, a very healthy list of folks that are gonna be speaking tonight, and we welcome that. We know that Trustee Lynch offered to get the Communications Committee involved. And I was thinking, while, while you guys were all talking, I was just jotting down a couple of things. You know, there's always a possibility of adding a, a virtual forum. We've, we've done a lot of forums during COVID, and they were very success, successful in hearing from people. And, you know, something like that can be open to a much larger group. And, and it, I think, I think that the COVID forums were successful. We could potentially do another survey at some point. You know, after a couple of World Cafes, we can, we can potentially send out a second survey. And I like the idea of attending town board meetings to get the word out to the community. Oh my gosh, there was something else. I just thought of it while I was talking. It's gone. It'll come back.
I just, I wanna be really clear that in no way am I denigrating the work that you guys have done. I, I think it's fantastic. And that is not at all my point. So I just wanna be really clear about that. Does anybody else have input or questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, that we did, we did discuss a timeline. And we were hoping to have a decision by April eighteenth. And, and I think that, you know, I know the community knows that we are working as, as a school board. We're working with the support of our consultant, Dr. Bill Christensen. And when we recently spoke with him about meeting with us in a board retreat coming up in a couple of weeks, he had a lot of suggestions to help us with this process, and really to make the process accessible for everybody, for the community and for, for all of us, the administrators and teachers, everyone. So, excuse me, so I'm looking forward to our meeting with him on February seventh, our retreat with him on February seventh. And, and I know that he's gonna have great ideas. He is in the reconfiguration business in terms of building and construction, and he will be able to help us move forward.
And I would also add that, as a superintendent in a number of different districts, and as a consultant, he has been involved in the reconfiguration of many, many districts, most recently in Liverpool outside of Syracuse, which is a huge district, and they did a tremendous amount of work. So I'm looking forward to his input and to his guidance and his work with us as a board. I, I think that when we leave that meeting, we'll have a much better idea of, you know, what the next steps are. Trustee Wallace.
To be clear, the April eighteenth, I think you said, is a, a date that we're, is a next step. The, the process of reconfiguration is multi-year. And I think it's very important that we, we just clarify that multi-multi-year, potentially. So that needs just to be, you know, put out there.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Wallace. I think that that's a vitally important part, point. And I think that the superintendent and the administration team will go over that a little bit later in the presentation about sixth grade. But, you know, we're looking at this process of actually reconfiguring the district, taking anywhere from five to seven years. And I think that that point needs to be really clear to everyone, that we may make a decision sometime in the next six months about what that looks like after we've done our due diligence, after we have community input, after all of the stakeholders have had an opportunity to weigh in. But that decision, the implementation of it, will take a very long time. And that's why it has to be done now. Because as you can see from our timeline, it's possible that by the time it's accomplished, we have less than a thousand students. And it needs to be done sooner rather than later. Trustee Lynch.
Thank you. Just to be clear, then, the board goal did indicate, right, that we would, we would create a, a long-term plan. Do we think that even having that long-term plan after speaking with our own consultant, that April eighteenth is even potentially viable? Or do we, do we, do we yet have a timeline on that in terms of when we could actually have a plan, which would include, you know, building utilization and all the other things? I'm just wondering if that feels reasonable?
I think, and I'm speaking, right now I'm speaking on behalf of the Ad-Hoc Committee, and I wanna make sure that everybody has a chance to weigh in if I get this wrong. I think what we're hoping for is to have a direction in mind by April eighteenth. The long-term plan will come after that. I mean, there are so many parts to developing that plan that if we have a, a vision of what we hope it's gonna look like at the end, and then we start planning, and I think that's kind of how it's gonna work. But we need to know what direction we're going in before we can develop a plan.
Anyone else? No? Okay. I think I'm on item nine point zero one. The board would like to acknowledge the publicly heard comments from the last meeting. Thank you, Ms. Shands, for your publicly heard commentary. Item... Item ten point zero one. Public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board cannot engage in discussion or answer questions during publicly heard. Please know that we hear you and take all of your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during publicly heard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do not name any particular individuals. That includes teachers. Or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the superintendent's intention in private. Okay, Mr. Brownell.
Would it pretty please... Is this on? Thank you. This is my eleventh speech or so. And up until, with the exception of the first one, I have been speaking about the fact that our government and the one percent has been running con games to get good people like you to do really bad things. And one of the things that they've been running is these con games to get you to teach our kids that America is one of the worst places ever, and it needs to be destroyed. Excuse me. Well, I would be willing to bet that nobody here even knows what America is. So let's find out if we can discover what is America. This story starts with a woman on her hands and knees scrubbing cobblestone. She looks up at her owner and says, "I don't dream of cobblestones." He says, "Dreams are for sleep. You see, slaves are not allowed to dream." But in seventeen ninety-two, the year seventeen ninety-two, something magical happened that had never happened before. That is, a sixteen-year-old country opened its first patent office. By, it was the first patent office in all of history to make patents inexpensive. For the first time in history, the normal person could dream. Up until now, seventeen ninety-two, the dreaming was left in the hands of the one percent, the rich, the government, the corporations. In three hundred thousand years, they got us all the way to the horse and buggy age. In a hundred and fifty years, actually less, dreamers got us outside of our solar system. America is literally the land of dreams. Stop teaching our kids it is the worst place ever, and start teaching them that they can accomplish anything with their dreams. It doesn't matter what problems we have, they will solve it. This is the first of many speeches on "In the Hands of the Dreamers." Neil Brownell, the crazy inventor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brownell. Jenny Jarrett.
Beat the clock. I'm ready. First, thank you all for your service to the children and families of this district. I'm Jenny Jarrett, president of the Bennett PTA, member of the Building Level Planning Committee, and mother to a current fifth and third grader. For background clarification, after the January tenth Board of Ed meeting, the PTAs were told that the board had decided to move the sixth grade and that the only decision up for vote was whether to move them Fall twenty-three or twenty-four. We expressed alarm at a twenty-three move, and we were told that if we cooperated with the board, they might choose to delay the move to twenty-four. All PTAs felt that between the two options, the twenty-four timeline was far preferable for the children, so we agreed to cooperate towards that twenty-four timeline. The PTAs were never asked for feedback on whether to move sixth, how best to move them, or what the appropriate prerequisites or appropriate timeline would be. We also tried to reach out to middle school parents, but the district would not approve it. My first question refers to Dr. Baumann's report, page sixty-six, item D, where he states, quote, "It's ill-advised to move sixth grade to the middle school until the two schools are reorganized and structural separation occurs so that there is significantly less interactions between the youngest and oldest students in the building. I see from the documents circulated tonight that the board and district have plans to perform the renovations, building restructure and teaching reorganization that Dr. Baumann points to as essential. What is the timeline and scope of the renovations and reorganization? Can they be completed before Fall twenty-three or twenty-four? With respect, I've never heard of a construction project that drew up plans after it started construction." Finally, we are all very focused right now on the sixth grade and the board's goal of creating a new middle school. What plans have been made for Bennett? Has the board and district considered what kind of environment will be created at Bennett when an entire class and presumably many teaching and specialty personnel leaves this building? What are the district's plans to address the empty hallways and classrooms? Dr. Baumann addresses the outcome of the potential mood of sixth grade out of Bennett on page sixty-six as being negative for Bennett while not solving for cost reduction, transportation issues, or declining enrollment. I'm concerned that with all focus on sixth and the middle school, we may inadvertently create a poor social and learning environment for incoming fourth and fifth graders arriving at Bennett, and I look forward to hearing all of your plans on how we can mitigate that. Thank you.
Joanna Drescher.
Hi, everyone. I am Joanna Drescher. I have a daughter in fifth grade here at Bennett and a son in eighth grade at the middle school. I don't normally like to speak in public, but with kids in these two grades, I felt like I should share my experiences from the past couple of years. Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, I'm too short for this. The past couple of weeks have presented the opportunity for me to reflect on why moving the sixth grade right now to the middle school hit a chord for many of us. It also gave me an opportunity to read through Dr. Baumann's report on options for how to better organize our district. While I and many of us are not opposed to combining the fourth through, sorry, the sixth through eighth grades, and it may make sense for the curriculum, the report specifically speaks to moving the sixth grade independently of other changes to the district. On page sixty-six that Jenny just referred to as well, Dr. Baumann lists out his final recommendations. And in point D, as Jenny said, he said, "Could grade six simply be moved to the middle school and the district take no further action?" He answers that it would be ill-advised to move the grade six to the middle school until the two schools are reorganized and structural separation occurs so that there are significantly less interactions between the youngest and oldest in the building. He said the grade six relocation should be part of a larger, long-term plan. So, related to this, our experience over the past year and a half at the middle school has shown that the middle school is very much part of the high school with shared hallways that are already overcrowded without the addition of more children. There are also lockers that are in mixed hallways for the middle and high school students. And in the last year, there are reports of fights in the hallways witnessed by other children who were frightened. Bathrooms are also shared, and there are reports from our children of vaping and drug use as well as fighting in these bathrooms. There has been little communication from the middle school administration about this in stark contrast to Bennett, where communication comes more readily. News about the fights and vaping comes from our children, and there has been no communication from the school to allay our fears as parents. And so we can better understand how the current issues at the middle school will be addressed in terms of the fights, the vaping, and the drug use. It is concerning to add more children into that environment, and we would like to understand the plan to address these serious challenges already at the middle school. Further, we would like to understand how Dr. Baumann's suggestions about the structural changes at the middle school will be considered before the move takes place, especially in light of what was discussed tonight in terms of a long-term plan becoming more clear in the coming weeks. That's it. Thank you very much.
Karen Thomas-Malloy. Okay, if you could speak directly into the microphone, that would be terrific.
I will certainly try. How's that? Karen Thomas-Malloy. I am the parent of a current Bennett sixth grader and Bennett fifth grader. And I'm also the Girl Scout Troop six zero zero five nine leader for the juniors, which are the fourth and fifth grade girls. And prior to this year, I was a member of the Mountain Valley Little League Board, an assistant coach, and ASO seven thirty-two soccer assistant coach. And my robust meeting schedule outpaced my constitution, so I had to cut back a little bit. But I've had a lot of experience with a lot of different ages of the kids in the last ten years around here. I'm very concerned, I can speak personally about my daughter moving from fifth grade right into middle school next year. What I'm seeing with the girls in my troop is that while they are well-advanced in terms of computer skills and organizational skills and even adaptability, they are not at the level I used to see in fourth and fifth grade girls for interpersonal communication or working together in a group. They don't even look in each other's eyes the way we used to. I think the interruption that these kids have had in their elementary education has been unprecedented in the last, this three years. We haven't even had one normal school year yet with all the activities and student government and social parties, et cetera. My daughter is waiting for her first school dance. She hasn't had one since she was in second grade. Moving those kids after that interruption out of elementary and into middle school is unconscionable. It is increasing the tragedy of what they've lost instead of trying to help them and support them to get through. I understand that you've laid out some ideas here, and everyone is trying to work for what's best for the children. But I think these children and the fourth graders, and maybe even the current third graders, have lost too much already. Let's plan. We have to do something, and most of the country is going to the sixth, seventh, and eighth. But these kids, right now, don't need more interruptions in their... don't need more interruptions in their social and emotional upbringing. They're terrified of this idea, and they're not ready. And putting them into middle school is going to cause problems that we can't even begin to predict. I don't even need to use all my time. Thank you very much for what you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Christina.
Hello. My name is Christina Signor, and I have three children in the district, one at Fenicia and two at the middle and high school. I'm also the PTA president of Fenicia School as well as a member of the Booster Club. I am always willing and wanting to work together with the district to offer our children, young and old, the most enriching and engaging educational experience possible. I want to be able to support the district in this overall plan to reconfigure for the better good of the students, especially the initiative to move the sixth grade to the middle school and be a team player. However, how can I possibly do that when I have a seventh and ninth grader, sorry, who have been predisposed to the ever-growing vaping crisis within Antioch's very own walls? So much so that they don't even want to use the bathrooms throughout the day in fear of. Unfortunately, those issues are not simply just isolated to the restrooms, but also easily being used within common areas such as classrooms, locker rooms, hallways. I can't help but feel that there's a lack of prioritization from the school regarding this very important issue. When teen vaping impacts the students and school personnel around them, it's no longer just an individual issue, it becomes a massive public health and safety concern. I believe that the district purchased and has installed vaping sensors that the taxpayers spent money on, yet I have come to my attention that they're being underutilized, not being utilized for whatever reason. I'd like to know why that is and why they're deactivated. The current policy in place has been proven to be ineffective. When I asked my children and their friends if they could estimate the percentage of students in their class they believe are vaping, it was horrifying to hear a consistent consensus of seventy and eight to eighty percent. Seventy to eighty percent of their class either know how to use cell or even seen vaping within the school walls. If a child is caught using, the processes for the teachers to contact the office and then turn, then in turn, the children are then sent to walk unaccompanied to the office, allowing them the opportunity to hide or dispose of what they have on them. This is completely unacceptable. Antioch needs to do better. Antioch needs to enforce a strong, consistent vaping policy with consequences while going beyond citations and suspensions and help students quit. Citations and suspensions do not get to the heart of the addiction issue. The policy should require an increase in monitoring within hallways and enforcement of random backpack and locker checks as well as mandatory educational meetings for the students that violated the policy, opening up a dialogue for them to discuss why and what they're doing to their bodies. Students need to be educated on the risks of vaping as well as enforcing a strong, consistent school policy against it. The education needs to start sooner than later. I suggest that education should start with administration and staff because it appears the level of threat on our children is underestimated. I recognize this is not solely on the responsibility of the school, but also to educate, for the school to educate our children about the dangers of vaping, but that the parents need to become more active roles in checking their bags, considering this is such a high percentage, students are reporting that they are engaged in this. I'm just about, okay, the habit. However, the reality is the school offers an unsupervised venue to grow and spread amongst our children. There's diversion programs to help students quit, and I'm more than willing to share that information with the board. I just want to support the priorities of the board looking to do what's best for the kids. However, in doing this, we have to make sure we are not hurting the kids in other ways. This policy measure needs to be implemented and enforced prior to introducing new, younger, and impressionable children into this environment. Thank you for listening, and I truly appreciate your time and service.
Rachel Becker.
I'm ready. Hi. My name is Rachel Becker. I am a parent of a third grader at Woodstock and a fifth grader at Bennett. I've lived in the district for over twenty years. I'm speaking tonight with concerns about the plan to move the sixth grade to the middle school. It is possible these concerns will be addressed in the superintendent's upcoming presentation. However, it is my understanding that the board will vote tonight on when to implement this plan, so it feels important to me to voice my concerns now for your consideration. I am not speaking in opposition to the idea of moving the sixth grade into the middle school. My concerns regard implementation of the move. One concern is that the physical space of the middle school receive adequate modifications to safely bring these younger students into the building as outlined in Dr. Bachman's study. My larger concern is that this move of the sixth grade be done only as part of a district-wide plan for building utilization and grade configuration. As others have mentioned, in the final section of Dr. Bachman's report, he poses some questions, and one of those questions was, "Could grade six simply be moved to the middle school and the district take no other action?" His comment, his opinion, quote, "It would be ill-advised to move grade six to the middle school until the two schools are reorganized and structural separation occurs so that there is significantly less interactions between the youngest and oldest students in the building. Only moving grade six from Bennett provides limited benefit. There is little to no savings in transportation. Bennett would become a smaller grade four, five school with excess and underutilized space. The challenges of declining enrollment are not addressed. Grade six relocation should be part of a larger, long-term plan." End quote. I will repeat that. The expert that we all hired to study building use and grade configuration in our district states in his final report that moving the sixth grade into the middle school should only be done as part of a comprehensive district-wide plan, and it would be ill-advised to do otherwise. Not only is there limited benefit, but it may be detrimental to the district's long-term educational and fiscal goals. Given that, I hope that the Board of Ed, the stewards of this school district, will choose to vote against any plan presented to move the sixth grade that is not part of a comprehensive plan. I recognize that continuing the process of developing a long-term plan is no easy task, and I understand the impulse to do something. Still, I hope the board will choose to follow Dr. Bachman's guidance and delay moving the sixth grade into the middle school until a full plan for building use and grade configuration is developed. I want to thank you for your service to our community. I recognize this is a huge job with many difficult decisions with large implications. I thank you for your time and energy, your thoughtfulness, and your open-mindedness.
Elizabeth. Elizabeth? I don't want to mispronounce the last name. Nysel? Thank you.
I, my name is Elizabeth Nysel. I have twins in fifth grade at Bennett Elementary. I did not write out a speech to the seeming, but everything that I was going to say has been said already. So I want to say something directly to trustee Sherry in response to your comment of reaching out to town boards. Town Board of Shen Deacon would welcome any opportunity to work with you. I say that as a board member. I did not hear of any attempt to reach out. It's possible you did and it didn't make it through. That happens a lot, but I will look into that tomorrow. Thank you.
Let me just say that every household in the district, including every town board member in Shen Deacon, received our postcard that asked if they wanted to participate. So it wasn't a direct invitation to the Town Board of Shen Deacon. It went to individual households.
You had said you heard from only two town boards in response.
I will.
It gave the impression you reached out to all the town boards and didn't hear back. Perhaps I misunderstood.
I actually personally reached out to each town supervisor in addition to the postcards.
I'm going to follow up with supervisor DiScalfani tomorrow and find out why that didn't make it to the board because two of the board members have children. I'm the only one whose child is old enough to be in school yet, but the other one will be someday, and I know they're all interested. So I'm going to follow up on that, and the Board of the Town of Shen Deacon will be getting back to you, and we will look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Cara.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. As a mother of two elementary-age boys, Woodstock Elementary co-president, spouse of a secondary teacher, and community member, I welcome this opportunity to be heard. A portion of the first twenty-two, twenty-three Board of Ed goal states, quote, "The board acknowledges that additional challenges and opportunities will likely be discovered throughout the exploration process," end quote. I believe that the almost one hundred and fifty questions from Antioch families and staff emailed by the PTA to the board and administration over the last week, in addition to those sent by individuals, reveals the plethora of challenges and opportunities so large that voting on an implementation date is like putting the cart before the horse. There is no failure in keeping a six-to-eight middle school as a future district goal and begin taking the necessary steps to make it a successful implementation instead of locking in the Fall of twenty-three or twenty-four. As quoted multiple times, I didn't know that, on page sixty-six of Dr. Bachman's report, I'll say it again, quote, "It would be ill-advised to move sixth grade, to move grade six to the middle school until the two schools are reorganized, structural separation occurs so that there is significantly less interactions between the youngest and oldest students in the building," end quote. He also adds, quote, "A Board of Ed is wise to make decisions that are long-term rather than short-term. Long-term requires thorough study, examination of the alternatives, input from others, and anticipation of future trends and opportunities," end quote. Change can be and often is a beautiful thing. It begins with transparent, respectful, honest communication and the building and maintaining of trust between stakeholders as a plan is carefully and thoughtfully delineated. Please do not make this a reelection decision. Please do not rush the sixth grade move. Thank you. And thank you for volunteering and doing a job that not many others would do. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
Pamela.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Peltsman. I am a parent of three Antioch Elementary students, a first grader at Fenicia and a fourth and sixth grader at Bennett. I serve as the corresponding secretary for both school PTAs. First off, I would like to thank you all for your volunteer service and time. It is admired and appreciated. Although it has been hard to be at the live meetings with three young children at home, I have been present for all of the virtual meetings, including the COVID info meetings during the pandemic. The board and administration's communication and transparency was reassuring and appreciated during that stressful time. Somehow, the communication regarding moving our sixth graders fell through the cracks. I was shocked to hear of the sudden timeline to move the sixth grade at the last board meeting. After a remote year at home in fourth and a year masked from his peers in fifth, my current sixth grader is absolutely flourishing this year at Bennett. He is active in the band student government and also is so excited to run for and be elected as vice president of his class in student council this year. He told me that about twenty percent of his class participates in student council, an opportunity only given to sixth graders at Bennett. I feel that this is an important opportunity for future class leaders to develop. I fear that my fourth grader and his peers won't get the same opportunities if his class is to be moved up to the middle school without careful planning. It will indeed take time. Will sixth graders join the student council with seventh and eighth graders? I know my current sixth grader would be terrified too. Also, the band program at Bennett is a huge part of my sixth grader's life. He's gained so much confidence working with his band teacher and the other amazing faculty over the last three years at Bennett. What will happen to the concert band that is currently made up of fifth and sixth graders? Will there even be enough students to make a band? As you can see from this chart behind you, the students are working hard through good behavior at lunch to earn an extra recess. I know my sixth grader looks forward to and needs recess, but at the middle school, there is no time in the schedule for it. Will this affect their ability to focus their young minds? There are so many questions to be considered. Lastly, I am concerned deeply that our babies, who still have so much maturing to do after years of socialization lost, will suffer if they are thrown into a school building at eleven years old with kids who are so much older influencing their every move, vaping and fighting in the bathrooms. My eleven-year-old doesn't need to see that. I understand that there are things to be gained by creating a six, seven, eight middle school, but I am deeply concerned at what we will be losing. Can we please let our sixth graders gain the confidence to lead and shine like they currently are at Bennett before they experience the pressures that plague the teenage years? Thank you.
Harvey.
Good evening. I'm Harvey Boyer. I'm the band director here at Bennett School. And I come here today actually wearing two hats. I'm a voice for the Antioch Music Department, and I'm also the Bennett president for the OTA here. And I've been told and informed that some sources have said that they're not unsure where the teachers stand on this issue. And I felt compelled to come here and try to talk about it a little bit. We feel that this change makes sense, and we support it. We look forward to partnering with the board, the parents, and administrators to make this transition work and see that with thoughtful planning, this could prove to be very beneficial to the students we teach. However, our concern and objection is to rushing into this decision for this September. This change is so multifaceted that doing it hastily would indeed be detrimental to each and every stakeholder group. Let's roll this out in a way that is thoughtful and not rushed. We need to make time, take time, to construct a framework that allows us to plan for both the educational adjustments to curriculum and staffing and scheduling, et cetera, and the physical adjustments of moving our resources and materials that must involve every school in some degree. The educational responsibility of getting all of this right is imperative. As a teacher of this district for twenty-six years, I have experienced these moves several times now. This will definitely be another redistricting, and all parties involved would be best served to have a little more time, just a little more time to make this transition smooth. And my wife told me not to do this, but I'm a music teacher, so I'm going to. In conclusion, I'd like to quote the band, the chairman of the board, and say, "Give us just a little more time." I had to. It was either that or sing "September", which you guys have heard me do before. But please, in all seriousness, let's give this more time. What's the rush? Let's really be thoughtful about how this is going to impact our district. It's an amazing district. I'm proud to teach in. And even more amazing students we teach deserve that opportunity. Thank you.
Melissa.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving this opportunity for the community to express their concerns and questions. My name is Melissa Rabuffo, and I'm a mother of two children, a fourth grader at Bennett and a first grader at Fenicia. I'm also an elementary school psychologist in a neighboring district as well as a PTA, Fenicia PTA president, secretary. If I could, I would like to start off and publicly thank you for all your tremendous work during COVID. Almost three years ago, school districts all over New York State had a horrific task of keeping students and their families safe while continuing to educate students. Antioch, along with other school districts, did the impossible. The majin teachers, resourceful sports staff, and most of the extraordinary school nurses rose to the challenge and did something extraordinary. There was such care, and I got to see it right in my own living room, as we all did. Teachers showing our youngest kids had to log in, patiently reading stories to virtual classrooms, breaking down math problems remotely, and asking for the hundredth time today to unmute yourself. They were amazing. But I also need to thank the district administrators, superintendent, and current and past board members for the countless hours of creating and revising plans so that our students receive their education. Without all your hard work and long, extra hours, we as a community would not have been able to do it. Working together, we can do incredible things for our students. But now our kids are back, and that in and of itself is amazing. We have a chance to build back better and return to problems, issues that are part of our small and special Mountain School District. But communication and collaboration and relationships only work if they continue, and earned trust erodes when communication breaks down. The long-term planning, shared decision committees, and world cafes are an example of continuing the same communication and collaboration that got us through the pandemic together. It would be a disservice to the district and Board of Ed goals of communication and collaboration to not have a fully detailed plan of the expansion of the middle school and high school. In light of the shared goal of communication and collaboration, please do not have the current fifth graders move to the junior high next year. As someone who has worked in schools with redistricting and school closure, you do not have enough time for the teachers, staff, building administrators, parents, and most of all, students to adjust and prepare. parents, and most of all, students to adjust and prepare. In light of the shared goal of communication and collaboration, please do not have our current fourth graders lose one more year of their elementary school when they've lost two years already due to COVID, academically, socially, and emotionally. Put expansion of the junior high school back on the long-term planning goal so it can be done thoroughly and correctly. The middle school work committee of two thousand and four, and again, two thousand and ten, did not take into account key factors, which are a daily part of secondary students' experiences. Vaping and e-cigarettes were not available until two thousand and seven and in a few short years became the most commonly used tobacco product, as well as use for drug use. According to the Surgeon General Advisory Committee of two thousand and eighteen, vaping and e-cigarettes increased nine hundred percent from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen. Also not factored was the rise of cellphone usage by younger and younger students, which contributes to cyberbullying. According to Cyberbullying Research Center, thirty-four percent of students in middle school and high school have been cyberbullied. Also according to Harvard School of Medical Public Health, the two thousand and nineteen pandemic dramatically accelerated decline in youth mental health. All these factors need to be taken in account for undertaking. I know working together, being collaborative, we can do, come up with a comprehensive plan that can be incredible. Thank you so much for your time and consideration and thank you for your continued hard work. Let's work together to do extraordinary things for our students and our community. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Hello. Thank you all for having me here. I'm Cynthia Nikitin and I'm going to take this in a slightly different direction, but I'll keep my comments short. Last year, my colleague Karine Dutte and I ran a project called Envision Boysville working with four students from the Antioor High School. And this was funded by a small grant from the Laura Jane Musser Fund through the town of Olive. And I hope some of you came to our workshops, we did presentations, we did surveys, et cetera. And Assistant Superintendent Laffin was very supportive of this project. And we came up with great concept plans and designs and that's kind of where, that's kind of where we ended that phase of the work. With support and encouragement from the Nature Conservancy, we submitted a grant to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation last August for additional funding to take the project forward. Originally, we just looked at the flood buyout lands in Boysville, the four vacant properties and the Stuckees is the fourth one, to think about having the students lead a process of figuring out with the community how we could repurpose these vacant lands to become vibrant, great, community public spaces. We can't really build on them, but that doesn't mean we can't use them for gardens, for community gatherings. We had lots of wonderful ideas from the community about how to sort of keep this area active even if we don't have buildings there anymore. But there's about eight or nine acres that are part of the flood or can be part of the flood buyout project. So, we looked for funding to do site assessment and preliminary design to go further, to say, what are we going to do with all of this when the fire station moves, when the Maverick Building comes down, et cetera? A lot of changes. How do we sort of get ahead of it so that we're not looking at a vacated hole where Boysville used to be? So, the Nature Conservancy, I blame them, were the ones that said, you guys should go after this. So, we submitted a proposal for a youth-led community visioning project where the youth from the high school and the middle school would be in a leadership role, helping to run a process, working with environmental designers and engineers to come up with plans for the future of the flood buyout lands as they become available. We submitted this application. Okay, there were eighty-eight awards. There were only three in the state of New York, Montauk, Queens, and the town of Olive. We got it. The town of Olive was, yes. The town of Olive was awarded two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to do this youth-led visioning, planning, design, assessment with engineers for Boysville. And on top of everything that is happening. So, I wanted to thank Superintendent Laffin for helping us with our support, with the application, hoping that as this project moves through the process with the town as leaders, that the school, that Antioor District, will support it with students, with providing us access to students, will really help us get the word out. I don't know that I will be involved in it because it's a federal grant, has to go through procurement, et cetera. Just wanted to make sure that you all knew that this was happening, that without the youth, we probably wouldn't have gotten the award. And I just wanted to thank you all for the support and encouragement you've given us. And I just, yeah, good luck. Thank you.
Janice?
Congratulations. My name is Janice Thierry. I am actually here to read a statement by a parent who could not attend tonight. Closer, okay. Her name is Katie Love Joyce. Regarding moving the current fifth grade class to the middle school next year, I am the parent of a fifth and seventh grader who both have IEPs. I'd like to remind the Board that parents are still dealing with the fallout from the pandemic with both academics and mental health. This is not insignificant for a lot of families and it is a very challenging time to find help outside of school for mental health. My biggest concern regarding this change is how will the district ensure necessary IEP services with a middle school schedule without compromising the quality or frequency of those services? Sixth grade seems to be the cutoff point at which kids who need extra help are getting services. By seventh grade, those services seemingly end and the kids are in co-taught classes. Progress reports regarding IEP goals end. How will parents know if goals are being worked on? In order to make time to receive specialized instruction in middle school schedule, my seventh grader had to give up a foreign language. There are a lot of missing details for parents like me and the details matter. In middle school, all kids are given responsibility of many aspects of their education, including communicating to the teacher regarding lessons missed while out sick, communicating when they need extra help, actually getting that extra help, as well as communicating to parents what is happening in school and after school. There is minimal information from the school administration or teachers that comes home to parents. Other parents joke about it as the middle school, quote, "black hole." But essentially, that means we know almost nothing except for the grades. Will sixth grade be the new seventh? Will eleven- to twelve-year-olds with IEPs and five oh fours be ready for middle school responsibilities? In conclusion, the vote tonight feels rushed. I don't see how so many moving pieces will come together and be in place by September of two thousand and twenty-three. Changes like this may even drive more kids out of the district or into homeschooling. Is this really the best solution or just the easiest? Rushing through this does not seem in the best interest of the kids or our community. Thank you, Katie Love Joyce.
Lindsay? Would you like to do that? Ms. Laffin's going to take the opportunity to, Amanda, Ms. Allison.
I just want to clarify in terms of inaccuracy, progress reports do not end. They continue with every student that has an IEP, usually perform quarterly and are sent to parents. So, certainly, if there's any question with that, please feel free to reach out to the PPS office.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. Ms. Janice?
I am reading this on behalf of Daphne de Jesus. Greetings. Let me preface this with, I know how hard it is. I know how, I know hard decisions have to be made and eventually, elementary students will have to be shifted in some way, shape, or form. Having been on the school board myself, I understand all the complicated scenarios and issues that arise from building utilization to transportation due to declining enrollment. I have found that many parents in my situation with a self-contained elementary student, mine is currently in fourth grade, are not aware of this situation going into the middle school. This board has promised clear and consistent communication with the community regarding the long-term plan. First, in general, moving the current fifth grade cohort to sixth grade this fall seems, seems that it would be detrimental to their social, emotional health as they were the ones who were most deprived when transitioning to Bennett from their respective K-three schools, well, I need classes, in the peak of their pandemic. I know what social, emotional health has been a huge focus over the pandemic and I would hope that this continues to be an important perspective. Secondly, moving the elementary students who rely on extra help of being in self-contained classes, their least restrictive environments per the New York State Department, into the middle school with no extra support and going into a brand-new environment of middle school and being expected to sink or swim also seems detrimental. Per NISID, which I know several of you are versed in and aware of, specifically, the department recommends that each school, district, engage in a district and school data review and analysis related to LRE, ensure that the full continuum of special education services and programs are available to all students with disabilities and assess and address the extent to which each of their schools provide high-quality, inclusive settings as defined in this memorandum. I would assume this has been done by the district, but I would like to know if this has been done in particular for the special needs and self-contained students entering middle school from this year forward. Certainly, if a child has a permanent condition that hampers their progress, they cannot be expected to sink or swim. My child with a neurological condition isn't going to merely rise to the occasion upon entering middle school. Neither will many of the kids like her who work hard and still struggle. Neither will many of the neurotypical kids even because they are all still adjusting to life in a waning pandemic. And though I know Bosie's a wonderful school, is on its own, is often, is often the offered solution, putting a child on a bus for upwards of forty-five minutes each day, one way, each way, to travel to Port Uand is not viable, is not a viable option for her or many of the others who live in Olive and Shandaken. The last time I came before this board as a PTA elementary parent was in two thousand and nineteen, advocating for my daughter. That school and its students, I was compelled to present the perspective of special needs and self-contained students. I am compelled once again to ask this, this has to be accounted for. Please let me know what to expect so that I and others like me can be prepared to talk to our children and consider our options because if you are determined to vote for this September, it is not a lot of time for the current fifth grade cohort to do so. Best, Daphne de Jesus. And she also wanted me to say that Ms. Allison did answer some of her questions and concerns today. Thanks.
Paula? I'm afraid that the, I can't read the writing on the last name, but the first name is Paula? She left? Okay. Josephine?
Hello, my name is Josephine and I'm a fifth grader at Bennett Elementary. And to start things off, I think that all the fifth graders have a say if they go to a middle school or not. And ninety percent of my friends, like, don't want to go because they think that they're not ready. And a couple of sixth graders also think that they can barely handle Bennett, so it's going to be a lot harder in middle school. And a couple of my friends also are afraid of going to the bathroom and like seeing people smoke and having the possibility of getting secondhand smoking. And I already think that like because of COVID in second grade, third grade, and fourth grade messing up the years, I don't think it would be fair for us to lose another year of elementary school. And science have proved that kids' brains won't walk that early in the morning. So, by the time that kids usually wake up, the buses will be at their house, meaning they'll be like half asleep all day and they won't be able to function as well. And they have too much homework. Like, usually, they're not used to having that much, so it'll just be too big of a change. I think they should walk their way into middle school and stuff and like... I know a couple of kids in middle school who get bullied for their height and like not knowing as much. So, I also think that like kids shouldn't be like having to go there at that age.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who would like to speak? If you could state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Karen Inge. I'm just going to read my, I'm coming to this from a different angle. Can you hear me? I felt I needed to come speak tonight on the topic of moving sixth grade students to the middle school. What prompted me to come speak tonight was what I witnessed while watching the January tenth Board of Education meeting by video. I was just wondering if any of the trustees watched the videos to see how they present themselves to the, to the public. I urge everyone to go back and watch the video of the January tenth, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. As a voting taxpayer in good standing, what I saw concerned me. I watched and listened to the video on this topic twice. I saw a single, just a single trustee doing the right thing by advocating for the students and families this decision will affect. The trustee, over and over, tried to actually adhere to the Board of Education Goals Resolution approved on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Even suggesting to reread the resolution, the trustee tried to express their difference in understanding, but was met with resistance every time. When researching the timeline of the development and approval of the Board of Education Goals Resolution for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, I was able to find where a clear and consistent community outreach happened that would allow the finalizing of and voting on a plan to move sixth grade students to the middle school by September two thousand and twenty-three or September of two thousand and twenty-four. In all the published documents I've read, the moving of sixth grade students to the middle school is part of the development of a long-term district-wide plan, which should include clear and consistent community outreach. I received a postcard in the mail titled, "Let's Plan for the Future Together." This card included explanations of what this title meant and included three scheduled meetings inviting community participation. Also on this card was the subtitle, "We Want Your Feedback As We Develop Our District's Long-Term District-Wide Plan." Listed on the card, under the subtitle, was the expansion of the middle school to add grade six. As all of you know, meetings are scheduled for January thirty-first, February twenty-eighth, and March twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three to include this community outreach, as stated in the Board of Education Goals for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. Since these meetings haven't happened yet, it is unclear how the Board of Education can justify voting on this tonight. For the record, the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education Goals Resolution approved and published says that in the next year, the Board plans to accomplish forming a Board Ad-hoc Committee, holding at least one meeting to discuss the district's long-term plan, reviewing the building utilization and grade configuration study by Dr. Kevin S. Baumann, and requesting at least one progress report from the superintendent. Nowhere does it state in the Board of Education Goals for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, that there will be a plan or a vote on a plan to actually physically relocate sixth grade students to the middle school. Again, it is unclear how the Board of Education can justify a vote tonight to physically relocate sixth grade students to the middle school.
Karen, can you finish up, please?
Yep, I'm done, almost done. Over and over again, the documents published, the possible relocation of the sixth graders to the middle school should be part of the development of the district's long-term district-wide plan.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Lisa Treasure. I have two kids currently in the district. My son graduated last year. Clearly, everyone that has spoken tonight is on board with moving sixth grade into the middle school when the time is right. Clearly, it's been spoken about. Every single person that came up here to talk has talked about, we are with you on moving sixth grade to the middle school. The time is not now. The long-term plan to, we all know what's going to happen. Close two elementary schools, come to one campus. K through five, Bennett, nice high school, all one campus, everything's great. Just listen to everyone that has spoken tonight. Wait, wait it out. You need to have a plan before we move sixth grade down to the middle school. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? No? Item eleven point zero one, Superintendent Victoria McLaren, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Stephanie Laffin, and Assistant Superintendent for PPS. and Assistant Superintendent for PPS, Mad Alison, will present the sixth-grade reconfiguration PowerPoint.
Thank you, everyone, um... Ladies? So I think everybody has seen a lot of the history. I didn't want to go back to the oh-four, oh-five, um, on here, so we included some information from the two thousand ten-eleven middle school task force, um, and all of the possible configurations that they reviewed. Um, and the final recommendation of that task force was to create a sixth-toeight middle school in the middle high school. And then, many of you will remember that in February of two thousand twelve, um, the board actually chose to address declining enrollment by restructuring the K-six buildings. Um, so we went from three K-six buildings to two K-three buildings and one four-six building. Um, that was completed for the opening of s- of school in September of the following school year, but at that time, no action was taken, um, to address the middle school. We've had multiple, uh, readings of the Board of Ed goal for this year. I don't feel like I need to read that to everyone. But as you have all noted, it contains multiple components: the creation of the long-term plan, the expansion of the middle school, the forming of a board ad hoc committee, the holding of at least one public meeting, and the review of the study done by Dr. Bachman. So moving sixth grade is one component of the board goal. That component will have its own implementation process that will be unique to the student staff and buildings involved. The student-parent and staff engagement will be separate and focused on the particular needs and opportunities inherent to the incorporation of the sixth grade in the middle school. Once the specific cohort has been identified, for example, once the timeline has been, um, solidified, then all of that collaborative work will begin to plan for the implementation. Assistant Superintendent Laughlin?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I just wanted to reiterate some of the benefits of incorporating the sixth grade into the middle school. Um, the six-eight model allows students to develop a greater sense of affiliation with the school and the staff, that feeling of a middle schooler. Students will have more time to build lasting relationships at a critical time in development. In addition, academically, sixth-through-eight staff will have more time to identify, assess, and implement supports and interventions. The model enhances the efficiency and effectiveness of curricular articulation and staff communication. New York State standards are often grouped grade six-through-eight. Academically, sixth grade is generally seen as secondary content. The six-through-eight model allows for the potential expansion of the PLC model and co-teaching models, which, uh, the middle school staff has been working really deeply on this year and last year. Um, opportunities to work vertically and horizontally, meaning across grade level and with multiple grade levels, to discuss student success and challenges, reflect on professional practice and instructional models, and work collaboratively by content area to strengthen our instructional models. Uh, for students who have IEPs, and there was some discussion at the last board meeting on this, and we wanted to clarify, um, and those who have related services, there's a great difficulty when they come to middle school to find the opportunity for electives and required classes, such as course or band. A move to this four-sixth grade would allow more opportunities for students to examine these required, um, earn these required course credits and give them more flexibility in their schedule. Um, it's really about providing them opportunity to experience things that other students can experience. The middle school teaching model allows more flexibility and time in what and when students access required classes. Uh, New York State recognizes the six-through-eight configuration. Languages, technology, home and careers, music, art, and health can be spread out over these years. Limited staff resources with certain certifications limit what we can, uh, what can be provided at Bennett. Um, in addition to that, it's not only limited certifications of teachers, but the, um, facilities, such as for home and careers and for technology, are not currently present at Bennett.
And I just wanted to say, you know, I very much recognize, uh, a lot of the, um, emotion and, uh, feelings of parents for these students who have, um, basically been just for their lifetime affected by the pandemic. I share that. I have a middle school student right now. Um, and for- for those reasons, those are the reasons that we feel this is a time-sensitive situation. When those kids get to middle school, as Assistant Superintendent Laughlin said, we want to be able to provide them with, um, the time to get through those required courses with the extra supports that this configuration would allow. Right now, there is nothing extra that they can have. Other students who are in middle school have access to electives and these required courses over the course of several years, not just those two years, and can have additional services, um, provided by PPS staff, can have study halls, can- can take multiple electives. Our middle school students don't have those opportunities, and these students who are coming up from the elementary now, who have been so impacted, deserve to have additional opportunities and additional services. Assistant Superintendent Allison?
So when we think about special education supports, it certainly is our intention that when moving the sixth grade up, that we provide a continuum of support similar to what we currently provide now, which includes a variety of different models of both co-teaching and self-contained. With that, we look at continued professional development and opportunities for our special education teachers, as well as some of our reading teachers, in multi-sensory reading, math, and co-teaching implementation. Um, really close collaboration with related service. And- and one of the things that I think is important to point out is that at a K- at our current, uh, K-six model, we look at related services on a, um, thirty-minute duration free, uh, frequency in terms of, um, total duration that students are in a service. When we get to the middle school, that increases by forty, it goes to forty-two minutes, which ultimately can lead to over an increase of over four hundred to six hundred, depending on the, uh, amount of service a s- a student, uh, could be looking at. Um, uh, we're also looking at continued AIS and MTSS support. We're really looking as a district, K to twelve, and revamping that. Um, our current model, just as, um, Superintendent McLaren and Assistant Superintendent Laughlin talked about, again, not only does it provide limited opportunities for our students with IEPs or five-oh-fours who have related services for extra support, but we have difficulty providing a- a extra AIS or MTSS support in our current schedule because we're also trying to look at all of those other mandated courses that we're trying to get in to that two years.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you just, um, clarify, um, what AIS is, what MTSS is?
Thank you. Trustee Bishop, I get lost in-
I know. Thank you.
Letterland. So AIS is Academic Intervention Service, and MTSS is Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And it's all of those great services that we want to have in place even before you come down to my office in special education. It's all of that prevention work that we so desperately need to try and catch students before, um, we're realizing that we have students that have learning disabilities and to constantly be looking at all the great data we're taking to provide good service and support. And that's not only social, it's not only academic, it can also be social-emotional, occupational therapy, speech and language, all of those areas. Uh, in addition, you know, one of the things that I- I think has been so wonderful for me in Antioa as a former school social worker is to see the- the generous mental health and SEL supports that have already put in- put into place. We are generously staffed, um, as compared to pretty much any other district I- I think I know of, um, which is great. But that also, uh, then allows us to utilize all of our wonderful school counselors, psychologists, social workers, um, eh, and Morningside, our SEL program, to, uh, support ongoing transition, not only just with our middle school staff, but transition support from working with Bennett and middle school staff to help that. We also have for this year a start, uh, with Aster Serv- Aster Services, so we can certainly support all of our families. And we do have an actual partnership with the county and the LaSalle School that only supports our middle school students, uh, and their families, that when I speak later about our snapshot in mental health, I'll be able to go in a little bit, but that program is only on, uh, for middle school at this point.
Assistant Superintendent Allison, can you just explain to everyone what SEL is and- and what-
Me and those letters, huh? SEL, Social Emotional Learning. So that's, um, uh, not only is it something that I- I think we're very proud of in Antioa, it's also, um, another one of the lovely unfunded mandates that come from New York State, but one that I- I think we all fully support. Um, and so we've done a lot of work in terms of, uh, looking at programs like Morningside to- that have been supporting our students, uh, now all the way up into high school. Um, and, uh, a lot of work with our counselors, psychologists, and social workers in terms of additional training and supports for them, professional development, so that they can fully support our students in all their social-emotional learning.
So I did kind of go back further in history to look at our enrollment, um, just because I believe that these numbers are very compelling. Um, if you go back to the two thousand three, two thousand four school year, um, when we still had West Hurley as a- as an active elementary school, we had four K-six elementary schools. You can see that, um, the district enrollment was well over two thousand, um, and the middle school-high school enrollment at that time was well over eleven hundred. Uh, the next year was the year when West Hurley was actually closed, um, due to the declining enrollment, and so we- we reduced our footprint and we began to occupy just the buildings and campuses that we are in now. And again, uh, just wanted to note that at that point, the middle school-high school contained more students than our entire district does right now. Um, we have since then lost over a thousand students, and the middle school-high school, um, has so many fewer than it did at that time. Um, and, you know, I think it's worth recognizing that a lot of how we function has changed, and so I wouldn't ever say that we should be able to fit eleven hundred kids in our middle school-high school, but we certainly, um, are not overcrowded at this time. And as Assistant Superintendent Leclair had shared, our enrollment projections are continuing to decline. Um, this was done taking into account all of the live births within our district, so, uh, you know, we can only project out for so far, because when babies are born, then we- we assume that they're gonna stay with us and enter our- our halls in a few years. Um, this does not take into account any potential, uh, enrollment booms, but given our very real issues with housing in this district, I don't know that even if we saw people move here, there's nowhere for a significant population to live at this point. So I think what we wanted to really, um, reinforce was that once a date is determined, then all of the following activities will be engaged in. There will be active engagement between the sixth grade and the middle school faculty on program design and implementation. Meetings with parents to discuss plans for engaging the students in developmentally appropriate learning environment that offers all of those extra activities and to address incorporating all of the concerns into our planning. Um, I believe Jenny Jared noted that we have received well over a hundred and fifty questions or comments or statements, um, from parents, and that engagement is absolutely valuable. We will begin to look at the utilization of the space and scheduling um, to enhance the separation between the sixth graders and the high school students, as recommended by Dr. Bachman, just in conversation with some of our middle school faculty. They, um, they already talk about how they would redesign the hallways and, um, they have specific middle school bathrooms, and they are constantly standing in their doorways during passing and watching the interactions. Um, but we can definitely enhance that with the, um, building principal and all of the faculty and sort of making sure that we are keeping appropriate separation. We would definitely want to meet with the students as well to hear their suggestions and concerns and to share with them some of the things that they might, uh, look forward to in this transition. And then refining the structure and support for the social-emotional transition for the students and families. We've already, um, had conversation with the Morningside, uh, our Morningside partners to start thinking about how to provide extra support.
So to piggyback on what Superintendent McLaren, um, discussed on that last slide, this is just a potential draft of an im- implementation dates, what it could look like. But the great thing about this slide and the previous slide is, um, as Mr. Boyer suggested, this is where we implement our amazing staff, our teachers, our administrators, and they roll up their sleeves and they get to work redesigning and reimagining and implementing something that is a wonderful experience for all of our- all of our students. So it's a matter of meeting with staff, discussing SEL structures, how to apply more support, what to tweak, meeting with parents, listening to concerns, addressing concerns, multiple meetings, and discussing how we are going to, uh, use space and use scheduling and use staffing to create that, uh, separate experience, a more separate experience for our middle school students.
We did, um, see a lot of questions about transportation and kind of what other districts have and what kids, what grade levels are on buses with other grade levels. And as you can see through this list, it sort of runs the gamut. Um, Ellenville starts us off with they have a K-six run and a seven-twelve run, but they are all going to the same campus, and they made it very clear that any student that misses their bus can get on any other bus in the district. Um, there are various configurations, uh, different building configurations that are not necessarily, um, isolated for transportation. Um, depending on the district, there are districts where there's a- a separate middle school building, but it is on the same campus or across the street from the high school building, and students will ride together, um, all the way down to, uh, at the very bottom. Uh, Weebetuck actually had, until this year, had their pre-K through twelfth grade riding together, and they had to split it because of bus driver shortages, not because of issues. Um, so there are- there are multiple configurations for buildings as well as transportation. Um, and it doesn't, the- I don't think any one is better or worse than others at this point. Um, nobody has expressed grave concerns over the mixing of students and grade levels on a vehicle. So... So just, uh, to be clear, though, moving forward, our middle students, middle school students, sorry, will continue to ride the bus with the high school students, but the late buses from our middle hu- middle high school right now also transport our Bennett Elementary School students. Um, that has been in place for years and has actually been successful. Um, and so we do not see particular issues with that. Um... Celebrations and moving up are also a very big concern that we saw in those questions. And I know that our Bennett Building staff has always ensured special experiences for our students as they transition to the middle school. I'm sure they would continue that, um, and we would make sure that each grade level- And we would make sure that each grade level that moves to the middle school would be recognized and would have a chance to participate in this important tradition. But depending on when that timeline is set, we will work with those grade levels. And that will be something that this building staff will do wonderfully and with Principal Bono, and we will support in every way that we can. And again, as we mentioned before, the district and building staff will work together to adjust the use of the space in the middle and high school to support the identity and developmental stages of the middle school, as was recommended by Dr. Bachman. And we also have no expectation that class sizes will increase. Our class sizes have always been really, really healthy and appropriate. And we have no expectation that we would do anything that would negatively impact that. This is not something, we're not laying people off to create larger class sizes. That we're not, that's not what this is. This is about creating an appropriate middle school. There were a lot of questions and concerns about potential extracurricular activities and opportunities for sixth graders. So if you go into the student handbook at the middle school and high school, you will see that there are a wide range of opportunities available to middle schoolers. In addition to this list of clubs, there are also other opportunities that are currently available for seven through 12. I did not put that list on here. I think that would need to be reviewed in light of the sixth graders coming up. But these are all separate and distinct middle school clubs. And then, just for anyone who's not familiar, at the secondary, when there are a group of students who are interested in a very particular club, they can actually get together and propose the creation of clubs. And that's how we create new clubs, based on student interest. And they can usually find a willing faculty member who sees kids who are passionate about something. And we always support creating new stipends for new clubs. This would be no different. Another concern that came through for a lot of parents on those questions was related to whether students would be allowed to participate in the modified program and if that would actually limit space for the existing students, for seventh and eighth graders who are currently filling those slots on modified athletic teams. They are actually, and this is not our, this is not our decision or our rule, but modified athletic teams do not include sixth grade students. So we've had initial conversations with our athletic director, who has already said that she will analyze the field and gymnasium use schedules for opportunities for sixth grade students to create intermurals. We do believe that fall and spring seasons would likely accommodate that. Winter will probably not. When the kids are inside, all of our gym spaces is used. So we would have to look for something else to do during the winter. But likely, fall and spring would be relatively easily accomplished. And that is what we have for this evening. But I would anticipate that as we move forward, we will provide as much additional information as is requested.
Thank you. Yeah, of course, please. Would anyone like to start, members of the board? Questions for any of our assistant superintendents, or for Superintendent McLaren? Trustee Taylor?
Hi, just listening, I read through all the parent questions, and I listened to your thing. I do have kids, obviously, in the district. My concerns are not different than a lot of the parents. With the vaping sensors, I know they've had issues. Is there a plan in the work to attempt to fix those issues? And maybe quicker response times to an alarm going off so that we can actually see what's happening in real time, as opposed to trying to find out later? Do you want me to go down a list?
They are working on the vaping sensors. They went through, over the break, to try and identify some of the issues. And I know Assistant Superintendent Leclair is also reaching out to the construction managers to try and identify the issues. There were, there were a lot of inaccurate sensor readings that were being put out.
So BBL has reached out to Kamali, and they are looking at it. And they should be setting up a meeting to have them come back in district to check it out.
Can we clarify what the issues are currently with the vaping sensors? And where they are, and where they are being used, and what the issue actually is?
Some of the issues have to do with, I think they are going off because of other, it's not smoke.
It has to do with molecules in the air that it recognizes. And they're saying that they think it has something to do with additional gases, because of it being a bathroom. So Kyle has actually put water in the drains. That seems to be helping. So, but again, we want to get the vendor out to make sure that we're actually testing the right thing, so.
But it is, it is also an issue of having people available to respond immediately. And depending on how many students are in the bathroom at a particular time, and addressing it in real time. So that's another issue that needs to be addressed.
That goes along with my other question. As far as I know, the teachers weren't available, standing in their doorway and watch the hallways. Is there an opportunity to make positions where it's a continuous hall monitor? Not just one, but like a couple that actively goes through the hallways during class and during transitions? So that it's not dependent on the teachers being available to watch the hallways, but there's somebody always making rounds?
It is. It is a large building, but right now we are appointing two monitors this evening, actually, for the secondary building.
Which will bring us up to three 40-hour monitors in the middle school, high school.
And their main role is to just go through the hallways, or do they have other responsibilities? Now, I know when the kids were in Bennett, we had a grant that, I think it was Colleen Young, that actually went into the classrooms to talk about just social awareness, I think it was the turtle when she did it, and talking about how to react to things, coping mechanisms, drugs. Is there something, another grant we can get so we can push into the classrooms more for the children?
Yes, you may.
So one of the things that has been really exciting is that actually under Principal Edelman, and mostly, I think, Principal Edelman, he has supported some of our staff, some of our school counselors and social workers in getting trained in something called Prime for Life, which is specifically around substance abuse, so that we could certainly look at supporting more students in-house in terms of looking at drugs and alcohol and being able to provide more intensive supportive counseling. Our support's also with Aster, and LaSalle also are there to also support that as well.
Sorry. This is completely hypothetical. If this plan went through for the next school year, if. Instead of just having the sixth grade on a schedule like a seventh or eighth grader would, is there a way to kind of take the time to plan? Maybe we can keep them similar to how they would be in Bennett, so that we have that sixth grade, they're in a different building, but they use it as a transition year, where they can still switch classes like they would in Bennett, maybe as a group or smaller groups, so they're not individually trying to find their way around. This would limit the congestion in the hallways. It would help them be more secure in their switch, so that they don't feel like they're on their own. And then maybe we can stagger the bells so that middle school would transfer first between the classes, just a few minutes separation, and then the high school would, so that there's, you're not all the kids in once in the hallway.
There are certainly opportunities for creating different or a separate identity within the middle school. And that would all be part of the planning process with the principal and the faculty. And, you know, we would, of course, be including, there will be sixth grade faculty that may move with the students. So their input would also be invaluable.
Sorry, just two more things. Sixth grade moving up, is that, I know people are talking about the long-term plan, and they are separate, but is there a way to make one step for the sixth grade and the long-term plan to kind of overlap? So in moving the sixth grade up, would it also be possible or a thought to move the fourth and fifth grade down at the same time? So that, one, we would limit the impact to the music group, which is what parents are concerned about. So you're not having a smaller orchestra or band, and maybe not having enough kids to play. And at the elementary school now, the older kids can help the younger kids bring them up. And then you can collaborate better so that everybody gets everything that they need musically.
I think no matter what the long-term plan structure looks like, there would be multiple steps. So it would differ based on what the long-term plan was. There are multiple options, but if we're looking to, if we end up closing one or more elementary buildings, there will be capital work needed to be done. And so there will be the opportunity to shift grade levels in order to accommodate that. But it really depends on what the final determination is.
I'm not on ad hoc committee. So I know parents were concerned about the amount of switches. So that's why I was thinking if we did that one switch, fourth and fifth down, and sixth up, then you can limit the amount of switches, so it's not year to year. We could possibly work on the Bennett building at once, when all the kids are out. So it's not a smaller and more isolated group, and then we can make one final switch, if that's the plan that everybody agrees to.
If that were the plan, that would likely be a way to stage it, and that would avail us of being able to have construction done in an empty building, which would allow it to happen during the school year, which would be much more cost-effective.
And safer for the children, I would think, if we're worried about dust particles and stuff like that.
Absolutely.
Two more things, I have one, I'm done.
Trustee Taylor, I'm sorry, why don't we let Trustee Wallace ask his question, and then I'll come, I know, I'll come right back to you.
Thank you. I'd like to know, first of all, this figure of 70% that was bandied about of potential vaping of that level, that sounds astronomically high, not in the experience. I talked to my own son, who's an eighth grader, and just, you know, he doesn't see it now, and he's also into Pokemon, so that may be part of the problem. But is that, is this 70% figure in any way accurate whatsoever?
Not to my knowledge. I have no data that supports that. I know everybody's experience is their own personal experience, but that has not been what I've seen when we talk about vaping at the high school, not to minimize the fact that it is a very, very serious and troubling trend. I don't know that I can actually call it a trend. I feel like it's much more entrenched than a trend. But I have not, I have no data to support 70 to 80%.
What is a potential benefit of of older kids mixing with younger kids? Do they, couldn't they be potentially, is there a lemonade aspect where you're providing increased maturation, because they're in some ways helping the kids and guiding them?
I think that's absolutely an opportunity, and that we can have mentorships likely between older and younger kids. I know one of my, one of my favorite experiences, walking through the halls of the high school with Ms. O'Connor, was that one of, a couple of her, at that time, middle school students were not behaving appropriately in the hallways. And the high schoolers literally walked by and said, "We don't do that here. Cut that out." Just as a, hey, you know, fly right. This is our school too. And I think with the right supervision, those relationships could flourish. But I think it has to be done appropriately and thoughtfully.
Thank you, Trustee Wallace. Trustee Lynch?
I just want to make sure, I'm not out of turn. Trustee Taylor had two more questions, so I just want, okay, it's cool, okay. Okay, thank you very much for the thoughtful response from the community. This is what this is all about, and I'm so grateful for you all to come, and especially those of you with young ones at home or paid-for babysitters to be here. I really, really appreciate it. The second thing I want to say is to thank you to the administration. This was a very helpful presentation, and one that has really helped, I think, bring much more just direct communication and therefore trust between all of us about how we move this forward in service of the kids. Quick question, not quick question, maybe complicated question, but I just want to make sure, because I'm really grateful that you put that illustrative time plan together that you spoke to Superintendent Laffin. My question is, would the building modifications that you talked about, per Dr. Bachman's study, require a build-out? And would we use the $8 million in reserve that we heard from Ms. Leclair to be able to, to be able to meet the timelines potentially put forward tonight? To be able to do the build-out, if that's what's required?
I can jump in here. I don't anticipate that that would require capital work. We're talking about more more specific location of offices, of classrooms, of faculty, and trying to really create spaces that are dedicated to the middle schoolers, not building walls.
Okay, so you talked about reconfiguring hallways. Can you tell us more what that might look like?
Sure. In terms of classrooms where middle schoolers need to get to, and having hallways that are very separate and dedicated to middle schoolers, and trying to reroute traffic so that we don't have high schoolers and middle schoolers traversing the same hallways where possible. And there will be spaces that will have high schoolers and middle schoolers, and then designing the appropriate supervision and staff coverage in those spaces.
Okay. I have another question. Okay. In terms of the plan, do you, does the staff feel that they could effectively meet both the safety concerns and also meet the needs for kids with IEPs and 504s? Potentially even keeping an option for contained classrooms if needed? In this plan, do you think you could address all of the safety concerns that have been raised, as well as meeting the needs of those children?
Yes.
In terms of special education supports, yes, those are looked at, based on the needs of students. And if we have to restructure continuums year by year, we do that based on the data that's presented, the recommendations of our professionals, our teachers, our staff, the input from our students, from our families. And we look at what our resources are, what we need, and we look at how we can build capacity that way. And that's what we'll continue to do, no matter what is decided.
Including potentially contained classrooms if needed?
If that is what is needed, then we will provide it. Whatever services are needed, based on, again, that data, our input from our staff, we certainly look to do that. It can be sometimes a little difficult in a district this size in terms of having outliers. We certainly don't want classes of one or two, because that could also be on the other capacity detrimental to students. But we weigh that very carefully, and we look, we think creatively in terms of how we can build support for all of our students, and also build our professional capacity.
Okay, and then in the last, my last question is just about the Bennett environment that many parents spoke eloquently about in Okay. And then in the last, my last question is just about the Bennett environment, um, that many parents spoke eloquently about and our teachers as well. What, could this plan give us time to ensure that there's a, there's thought to the Bennett environment? The, where there would only be two classes? Two grades. Thank you.
Could you rephrase that question?
Yeah, sure. Would there be time to work with the current students and the current Bennett community? To ensure that we're maintaining a healthy Bennett environment?
Yeah.
Recognizing that there's issues with having two classrooms in a building, the lack of continuity that we're, we're seeking.
We're talking about two different potential timelines, so obviously there's more time if it's September of twenty twenty-four. Um, and in, in that case, there's more time to build in potentially other components as trustee Taylor was talking about.
Trustee Taylor?
Hi. Um, if it happens in twenty-three, would there be, uh, benchmarks or goals that would have to be met before we progress further on so that if, uh, Juley fears that if we weren't prepared, we have the opportunity to just push it back that one year if we're not, if we're finding that we can't accomplish our goals in our set timeframe?
I think we could absolutely create that, um, if it's twenty twenty-three. If it's twenty twenty-four, obviously there's much more time for planning.
Um, whether the, go, the move happens this year or next, is there a way we can push into the fifth grade now to help prepare them to allay their fears so that they're not thinking that it's sink or swim, which would absolutely not be for these children?
Once the timeline is decided, then there will.
Even if it's not this year, can we work on something this year, separate from this goal of moving? That we give them more services now, especially with post-pandemic, um, just reaching into them now to help with their current fears and to help put, so that they don't develop new fears of going into the grade. Like, it seems like, I know there are not services available in the outside world as much as there used to be pre-pandemic. Um, and I, I, it seems to be a trend that a lot of children are having issues vocalizing or finding help. So if we can maybe help them a little bit more in school, that might help them transition later.
Sure. Can, can I speak to that? So, uh, again, um, we certainly have a, a lot of supports that we can utilize in all of our buildings. In Bennett, we have a full-time psychologist, full-time social worker and a full-time school counselor in there. We also, again, have our Aster support that is right down the hill. Actually, we made the trip up to Bennett to tour today. And we can certainly speak to, uh, those providers in terms of how they can work. I know a lot of them already push into classrooms and have collaborative meetings with teachers, both of students that do have IEPs and students that do not, in order to provide, um, you know, any kind of mental health or counseling support. It is also part of our MTSS plan and something that we continue to look at. In addition, all the work that Morningside has been doing in terms of that circles and, um, building practices and community and rapport in our classrooms is something that we continue to build on and something that I think we will greatly benefit from using in terms of having those conversations about anything that may provide some anxiety or concern or fear for students.
Um, I've already been in contact with and had conversations with our facilitators from Morningside that work in Bennett, talking about how they could utilize this school year to, um, you know, target specific cohorts, depending on the timeline of who's moving up. So that's something that can certainly begin with whichever cohort, including this year. They're already working on a design plan.
Last thing, I promise. Um, with the school buses, uh, I would, I would like to see hopefully that, uh, maybe separate them out by grade level or age level. I know some buses do it normally. I don't know if they all do. So that the younger kids would sit up front, older kids would be in the back, so that there is a little bit more separation and maybe the bus driver could keep a better eye on the, you know, the younger kids in the front.
Certainly, our director of transportation is incredible. And when there are issues, um, she works very closely with the drivers to try and alleviate it. I would, I would agree that it's sometimes good to have the younger in the front, but, but sometimes that's not who needs to be in the front. It, it really depends on the exact group of students that are on each bus. But, um, she, she is, uh, very skilled at helping bus drivers implement strategies. And in specific situations, she will ride a bus to, um, observe and provide additional suggestions for strategies. She has assigned monitors to buses to, um, address specific behaviors. She is, um, very adept at handling that. So separating them by age or grade level is one strategy, but there are a lot of other strategies that she is more than capable of employing.
Anyone else? You know, I, I think, I think I'm hearing a, a really continuous theme, um, not just from the community, but from board trustees. And, and a lot of it has to do with, um, with making sure that we're managing for, um, children's emotions, for, um, teacher supports, for structure of the actual building itself and for ensuring that, um, any student, not just potential incoming sixth graders, are not having to manage for vaping, fear of the bathroom, fighting in the hallways. Like, all of this stuff is not just about, for me at least, not just about moving sixth graders, but it is about the culture of our district. And, you know, personally, I'm highly committed to, um, to making those changes and identifying how we got here and how we can progress from here because it's not acceptable. I don't want to hear personally about any child who's afraid to go to the bathroom, whether it's in the high school, the middle school, or one of the elementary schools. So, you know, obviously there's a lot of work to be done here. And I'm fully committed to it and I know that the rest of the trustees are as well. So, you know, I, I think that part of this conversation, um, is also about, you know, where do we go from here? So, you know, whether we're looking at twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, um, we need to give this over to the team at Central and to the teachers and to Mr. Bono and to our new principal at the middle school to let them make a plan. Once that plan is made, we will ask them to come back to the board, at which case the public is more than welcome to participate, to hear about the plan. And then we can give input, our opinions about the plan. But I feel very confident that everyone sitting at the table is hearing the same thing. That that plan needs to include safety, it needs to include structure, it needs to include support for teachers and support for children. All of the things that, all of the professionals at this table and in this district are really well aware of and are ready to take on, um, in order to continue to move the district forward so that New York State does not step in and do it for us. We have to do some of this really hard work, um, so that New York State doesn't decide that it's their job to do, which is one of the reasons that we're doing it, primary reasons. So I hear, you know, clearly that we have work to do, but also that we have work to do in terms of, um, risk reduction and harm reduction and making sure that we're not, I don't, actually, I'm not really comfortable with searching lockers and searching backpacks randomly. I, I don't want to be that district, but I also don't want kids vaping, um, in the hallways or in classrooms or in the cafeteria or in the bathrooms, you know. So I, I think we have to figure out how harm reduction works at Antura, where we can be effective as a district in terms of making a change and making a difference. In the, you know, early two thousands when Big Tobacco was, um, heavily impacted by the work of Reality Check here in New York State. And Reality Check was in every school district in New York State, um, and they did tremendous work with Big Tobacco. You know, I'm hoping that we can look at doing similar work around vaping in our own district. It's obviously a really big issue. But more than anything, we need to make a decision tonight. So I feel, um, pretty clearly that we are able to take a vote, um, for making this decision and, and moving the sixth grade in twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to propose that. So the recommended action is that the Board of Education of the Antura Central School District hereby approves the date of September twenty twenty-four for the sixth grade reconfiguration. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee story? Would anyone like to make questions or comments? All in favor? Yes, we have five, six? No? Are you a, no? Sarah, are you a no? A yes or a no? You can't abstain on this one unless you have a fifth grader really or another legal reason.
Okay, thank you. I didn't realize that. Um. I, I guess my concern is that I do have a child that will be impacted by this decision and directly. And so I feel that, um, I should abstain. I th, but if, um, if I, if I can't do that, then that's fine.
I don't know. Uh, we were advised that an abstention could really only happen under very certain circumstances. But, you know, I'm willing to, to let it stand if that's what you feel like you need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's a six vote with one abstention and the middle school, um, will become sixth through eighth in twenty twenty-four. Item eleven point zero three, um, this is someplace else that I think we need to really have a conversation. I will fully admit to not doing, um, my job last week in making sure that everyone had the opportunity to, to talk about this. I think because we had other things that we were pretty consumed by. I'm really comfortable accepting Assistant Superintendent Leclaire's, uh, suggestions, but I'm also comfortable waiting until the next board meeting so that we all have some time to do some research. My inclination is to take the ten percent for the volunteers no matter what, um, but that's my inclination, you know. So I would like the opportunity for trustees to kind of think about this and really do some research. I, I feel like that maybe didn't happen last week. Go ahead, trustee story.
Can I suggest we vote on this one that she has given us and the volunteer one? We do at a different time. Uh, because this, uh, for the disabled and for the elderly, they need to get this back to their people by November, or back to their town assessors.
Totally agree.
By March first. And I just don't think waiting until, I think it's February seventh is our next board meeting, is going to give them enough time, especially we're in the winter, elderly don't usually go out if it's bad weather and stuff like that. I, I would like, if we could vote on this because it's been on the agenda, we've researched all that stuff. You know, we could come back to the fire, um, the volunteer firemen and AMS.
I'm comfortable with that as well. So, um, is everyone comfortable taking a vote on Ms. Leclaire's suggestion that we phase this in over the next three years?
I can also bring forward a resolution for the firefighters for the next board meeting. They're not as old, they might be able to get out before March first.
Would that be a separate, would that be a separate resolution?
It would be a separate resolution no matter what.
Okay. But that, it's just to be clear, that the timeline's the same for the volunteer firefighters?
Yes, the timeline would be the same. Yes, it would still be March first.
Can I just ask for clarification? Uh, for phasing it in, so the goal is to get up to the, the fifty thousand?
Correct. So it would start with for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, sorry, tax season, that would, they would get up to thirty-five thousand. Then for the following tax season, up to forty-two, and then the third tax season, the third year out, up to the fifty. So this way we can see the effect after the first year, rather than going right from twenty-nine to fifty, going from twenty-nine to thirty-five, thirty-five to forty-two, forty-two to fifty.
But we would vote, correct me if I'm wrong, we would be voting next, each year.
Correct.
So it would be thirty-five. I, I just have to say that, that I ha, I know this paperwork can be really challenging, especially for elderly folks. So giving them the time is critical because if it, if, if they do it incorrectly, this gives them the opportunity to cure it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we don't keep moving up without stopping and reanalyzing.
No, no, it would be, yes, we'd be reanalyzed every year. And then, and I just realized I never really quite explained the way the resolution works. So as your income level goes up, your reduction goes down. So, um, and this is, so the, the way the fifty thousand dollar read, it was fifty thousand or less, it was fifty percent. And then it goes up to, so it's, it's a, a phased in.
So the more money you make, the less you get reduced.
Correct.
Okay, um, so it feels like everyone is comfortable voting on this resolution and then asking Ms. Leclaire to come back to us with a separate resolution at the next meeting so that we can take action on that, um, giving the volunteers enough time to get their paperwork in if we choose to accept that. And I feel like we all are pretty much in agreement on that. So may I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, second trustee story, comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item eleven point zero four, a donation from Shutterfly. The superintendent recommends acceptance of a donation totaling two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents cash from Shutterfly LLC to be used to support the Woodstock Elementary Owl Store. Superintendent recommends approval to increase the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget line supplemental by two fifty-nine eighty-five. May I have a first please? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Bishop, questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, I need to go to the bathroom, so. Uh, I need to go to the bathroom, so. Okay, item thirteen point zero one, the consent agenda. The board hereby approves items numbers thirteen point zero two to thirteen point zero five. May I have a first please? Trustee Wallace, second trustee Raimondo, questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, sorry, schedule U.
Everything's in order with the schedule U.
Thank you trustee Taylor. Anything else? No, I don't think so. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item fourteen point zero one, the board hereby approves item number fourteen point zero two to fourteen point zero eight. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Story, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, were there any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, item fifteen point zero one. The policy committee reviewed and okayed as-is policies five one one zero, five one three zero, and five one four zero. May I have a first please? Trustee Raimondo, second trustee Bishop, comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. And the policy committee recommends that the Board of Education hereby rescind policies four three three zero, five one one one, five one two zero, five two one zero, four three three zero, five one one one, and five two one zero are considered nonessential per NISBA, and policy five one twenty is covered in policy sixteen ten. May I have a que- uh, first? Trustee Bishop. Second trustee Wallace, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, are there any other committee reports other than, oh, did I? Alright, do you guys want me to read this aloud? No, you can read it yourself? Okay. Alright, well, this is the first reading, so. Oh, go ahead, no. Okay. Okay, okay. You guys don't want me to read, okay. Alright, everybody, everybody's read it, so if you have any que- do you have questions about it now? Yeah, you can refer them to the policy committee if you do have questions about it. And that is trustee Bishop, trustee Raimondo, and trustee Hemingway Lynch. And do you guys have anything to report? No? Legislative Action Committee, there are some trustees going to attend lobby day. Trustee Wallace is going, trustee Bishop is going, so I'm sure you'll have exciting things, and trustee Hemingway Lynch. I'm sure you'll have exciting things to report back to us. Any other committee work?
Uh, facilities met this afternoon and we did our obligated tour of Bennett and that was, it was a very short meeting because our previous meetings have been canceled because of snow and stuff like that. So we, we were, we knew we were here tonight, so we wanted to make sure we were, did our obligated state SED tour. That's it.
Well, thank you for doing that. Anybody else? Audit Committee, Communications Committee, trustee Lynch?
Thank you, yes, the Communications Committee also had to cancel our meeting yesterday due to the snow. But we would like to solicit ideas for the next newsletter. There is a new BOSI's colleague. I'm not sure we know her name yet, do you, s- okay. So she's gonna also, we've, uh, Superintendent McLaren just offered to invite her to our next meeting once we reschedule that. So just a request from all of you to send either any questions you have for our new BOSI's colleague, and also and/or items for that newsletter. Uh, it's the, the same idea, right, that sort of board corner that we put in the last one. Thanks.
Does anyone have old business? Trustee Story?
I'd like us to bring up for, at a future meeting to, for the board to go over our board norms. I think that's very important and discuss those.
And also maybe at our retreat, we can do a little discussion around board norms at our retreat on the seventh. And please, it is imperative that each one of us are there. So let's just make sure that that's on everybody's calendar. Dr. Bill has confirmed his participation. Uh, any other old business? Trustee Story. We were talking about at the last meeting, you had brought up the policy regarding the regions and the resolution that was passed at Kingston High School. And that is, the discussion on that is on our next agenda for discussion. But I know that Principal Edelman had made some suggestions, and I think that the, the board may need to be aware of that before our meeting.
Sure, he had, you know, I called to have a brief discussion with him and let him know that the board would be reviewing the resolution that had been passed by Kingston and considering addressing something here. And he was hoping that the board would have a discussion, kind of identify the issue that they were looking to solve and allow the building level team to potentially meet between board meetings and maybe come back with some feedback as a group to be considered at the next meeting.
So you're asking what I?
After the board dis- the board will discuss at the next meeting and come up with maybe some things for the building level SDM team to look at and see if they can provide some solutions?
Okay, 'cause basically it's should, if a kid fails a regents, it shouldn't be part of his GPA or her GPA. That's basically it, how do we affect that? How do we do what's best for our students?
So I think that we should all take some time between now and the next board meeting to kind of familiarize ourselves with it. It will be on the next agenda. What Principal Edelman is asking is that we do not make a decision at our next meeting and rather that we give the building level SDM an opportunity to weigh in on our decision before we make it. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that and on the same page and had, took the opportunity to familiarize themselves prior to the next meeting so that we could really have a good discussion about it. Trustee Bishop?
Could we possibly get a copy of the Kingston resolution before the agenda comes out, just so that peo-
Okay.
Oh, okay, right.
It was back on the Ja- in the December meeting, in our, there's, our December twentieth meeting, it was on the agenda.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'll send it to everyone because it's in drafts now.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm not sure if this is old business or RFI. I'm thinking it might be more old business. Last year, for those of you who weren't on the board at that last year, when it came up to the contract for our SRO, the county was not, the full legislator approved it, but there was some lower level county meetings that there was some great discussion that they may have not given us, our contract for our SRO. Our board actually during a board meeting, then, or then superintendent and trustee Salam got off, walked off the board and to phone in so they could make public comment on why it's so important for this. At that time, we asked the legislators if they would like to come in and I personally invited them to see how we, how the SRO program works in here. I'm wondering if superintendent, Superintendent McLaren could reach out to the sheriff and see where we are because if the board, I'm willing to go to these county meetings and speak for what they are, why our SO, SRO program is so valuable here and why we are different. So if you could reach out to the sheriff and find out when that stuff is going on.
I would be happy to reach out to the sheriff and last year, even though I was not here physically, I also wrote a letter in support of the Ontario SRO program because it is just so incredibly valuable.
It was something that was, came to the board late on, so this is why I'm bringing this up now so we can keep this on our, on our radar so we know as stuff's going up and coming on, so we can address it.
I think this is kind of old business because trustee Taylor brought it up a couple of meetings back. But I just want to circle back a little bit about school safety. With the, uh, the six, the six-year-old shooting of the teacher last week, one of the things that, that really stood out to me was that after that happened, the Board of Education in that school district got together and, and implemented a lot of new safety requirements. And at the time, it really struck me because it was like, that's really too late. And I know that this district does a lot of work around school safety, but I was wondering, I know that we had a presentation about this, but I wondered if sometime in the next couple of months, if we could put together another presentation without sharing critical information, but updating the community as to any changes that have been made or any suggestions coming from the SRO and potentially impact from the board. I don't ever want to be in that situation where we're all coming together after an emergency to put things in place to keep children safe if we can do it now. So that's, I, it's old business because it's something we've been talking about for a long time. But I've just been feeling increasingly uncomfortable lately. Trustee Taylor?
I'd like to see more instructions to the children on what to do, God forbid something happens. I know speaking through the children, they all think of it as like hiding in the corner behind a screen, but there's much more things that they could do to make themselves safe. So I'd like to see more education at the, the children level so that they fully comprehend the seriousness of it and what they can do to keep themselves safe.
Trustee Wallace?
Is there even, because of the high level of gun ownership in, in the community, you know, is there any way to get involved? Or is it inappropriate to get involved in terms of safety of firearms, you know, in terms of storage? And discussing that with our community?
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to, personally, you know, would be interested in anything that has to do with prevention. One of the things that, that I learned from, you know, just kind of doing some research into the last incident with the six-year-old was that there had been reports that the child, you know, did have a weapon and when they searched his backpack, they didn't find it, so they let him continue on with his day. I know that Ontario has so many resources and I actually don't think that that would happen here. But I, I want us to just as a community be learning from the things that have happened in the past and, and seeing what we can do, doing some research into where people have fallen through the cracks and where these incidents have kind of arisen and just making sure that we're educating ourselves so that there is as much in place to keep the children safe and the staff as possible. So I think that's, you know, my pointless point is just, you know, as much as the board can do to support the administration in making sure that everything is being done and that research is being done into critical incidents in the past and what we can learn from them. And updating us, you know, as you think is necessary, but, you know, we'd like to be part of that conversation.
Safety seems to be at the building level on the committees. I would, I brought it up not really here, but I'd like to see like a debrief of each incident and what's, like with Uvalde, what went wrong? And think from that aspect so that we fill those holes so that it doesn't go wrong here. Like what they missed so that we can, you know, plan for that.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I think there's always a balance between what our administrators and our SRO know and need to know versus what the community and, you know, even the board members can know because, you know, their job is daily safety of our children. So I'm not asking to know critical information about how it's being done. I, I think I'm asking the same thing that trustee Taylor is saying is, you know, can we learn how the district is learning from critical incidents that are happening around the country? And just to kind of make sure that, that we're doing the work to learn from those things because it's just an awful feeling to hear what is being done afterwards when it could have been done before.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, of course.
So we do have a district-wide health and safety committee. Unfortunately, during COVID, a lot changed. And then after, how do we even say after COVID? Since the return to in-person instruction, let's put it that way. It's, it's been hard to get it back off the grounds. Obviously, I was not here last year, I don't know what happened last year. And of course, the first meeting we planned for this year got snowed out. But my previous tenure at Ontario, we had a very, very robust health and safety committee prior to COVID. We did a lot, we have the insurance company, our, uh, what's he called? Risk management guy from Utica National comes, Luke Kishara from Reese Insurance is there, the BOSI's representative comes, and we have very, very good debates on the health and safety of this district. We, there's a lot of differing opinions out there. We are, you know, we are limited in some respect. We are, you know, we are limited in some respects due to, due to fire safety, and what the, what facilities planning will allow schools to do. Like, there's a lot of, of these so-called school classroom locks, we can't use, because the issue is, if there's a fire and the door's locked, kids can't open them. So, it has to be quick egress. But there, there's a lot of things that are coming back around, and I think it's, it's starting up again, a, a lot of, because of what recently happened. But as we kind of start coming back into a normal school year, we definitely plan on bringing it back out. You know, bringing all the information back, having the meetings again. And hopefully, we'll have, we'll be able to reschedule the next one without another snow day. But you are always more than welcome to come. Valerie is the board member on the committee, but as always, anyone can come. They're usually between like three and five, because we try to obviously get staff involved into. But I mean, it's a, it's a large committee, it's, it's, it's about twenty people, so it is a large committee.
Excellent, thank you for that update, assistant superintendent McLaren. I think it probably makes us all feel better to know that health and safety is getting back up and going. And I know that you guys did excellent work prior to COVID, so I look forward to hearing how that committee progresses.
And then just one other side note, we do, do a health safety review with Utica National, and we actually got, you know, safety awards for it too, so gotta put a little kudos out there.
Excellent, thank you. Does anybody else have old business? No, okay, new business? Trustee Lynch?
I'm sorry, I'm also, it might have been old business, 'cause I brought this up before, so apologies, but I have a, have a request for, just a discussion about the snow days. Previously, we talked about, and potentially it was over an email, just getting clarity on the process for declaring snow days, and so I really appreciate the laser focus on school saf- uh, student safety in the buses. But at the same time, I can't help, as a board member, be very concerned about how disruptive it is to parents, the community, the economy, and our children, most importantly. And so, especially at the younger ages, they're, they have been interrupted, you know, quite a bit. So, I'm just curious how like North Dakota handles it, how Minneapolis handles it, places that have huge amounts of snow, and I have to think that it's about the budgets of those towns, right, and their ability to clear the snow quickly and effectively, so that buses can transport kids safely. And I'm curious if there is a, a way that we could look at this issue more holistically, and think about it in terms of whether it's potentially for something the legislative action committee could take up, or another committee to help, not to add more work, but just to get a better sense of how other communities manage for getting more kids to school more regularly, because it feels quite disruptive, particularly for parents of young kids.
I, I just wanna, I could make sure I understand. When we cancel, most, every other district in our area cancels, so I would not feel comfortable sending my kids to school, just to make sure that something wasn't disrupted. I don't understa- I'm just trying to understand.
It's not always the case, actually, trustee Taylor. Oftentimes, it's because of an outlying district of ours, and typically in the West, right, who, who has just higher snowfall, or a different level of participa- uh, precipitation. So, it's not always, it's certainly the case, and when it's an obvious snow, I'm not talking about the obvious snowfall that blankets the region, but when there are specific cases that, you know, the roads are slick, but there is not heavy percis- uh, precipitation, I'm curious if there's other things we could be thinking about, because it, it does disrupt.
I'd be concerned it was an equity issue, if like, treating one part of the district different than the other.
Hundred percent.
So, if my kids can get to school because my roads are clear and yours can't, that's not really fair to your kids.
Absolutely agree, so my question is, can we, can we help equip all towns to be able to clear the roads for the school?
I, I mean, I think, I think that one thing that we have to note is that New York State makes this very clear. If part of the district cannot come to school, then the entirety of the district can't come to school. I think that, you know, what I hear you saying, trustee Lynch, is that you feel concerned about what the snow days are doing to parents who have to manage for them, for their young children, and, and wondering what they do in communities that, that regularly have a tremendous amount of snow. Those communities are, are not in New York State, and don't, often don't have the robust requirements that, that NICID foists upon, you know, their, their districts in New York State. So, I would imagine, without having done any research, but understanding NICID a little bit, that that has a, a big part of it, but also, those communities are just actually better equipped. When I come to the town of Olive to go to work from the town of Woodstock, there is a vast difference between the road conditions in the two different towns. And, you know, I'm not going to say which side is better, but I will say that it is a, you know, it is a real challenge. I would personally never ask the superintendent to put the, the lives of any of our children in danger in order to get them into school, and I, and I'm sure that you are, that you are not suggesting that in any way. I think that we have to trust the superintendent and Ms. Summers to make those decisions. I think that next year, I was going to suggest a new business, that we look at our snow days and actually see if we can build in some more. I don't think that we have enough, and I don't think that our kids really like to do remote learning, although that is preferable to losing spring break. But, you know, I, I won't speak for you, superintendent McLaren.
I just wanted to try and clarify, at the end, I think you asked if we could help the towns get resources to clear the roads. I'm, I'm just not sure what that would mean. Some of our roads are town roads, some are state roads, so it, some are county roads, right? So, there are multiple levels of municipalities that are responsible for roads? What, what, what kinds of things are you thinking that we could?
And apologies for using a different state, I, maybe we could look at Buffalo. I'm just wondering if there are other municipal districts that deal with this issue, and maybe that is the, a good potential answer. Trustee Sherry is just looking at the number of snow days, but I just, I'm just curious how others handle it, and who have similar challenges with weather, and wondered if that would be helpful. And if not, that if there was a, a way in which we could potentially talk about the impact, and use that as, yeah, potentially help the towns get more resources for their highway departments, so that there is support.
I think the other thing that we also need to keep in mind is that our school calendar is a set number of days, so either we're gonna have snow days, or we're gonna have other days off. So, it's kind of, you know, building in between when we start in September and when we end in June, we only have so many instructional days contractually, and for the state's requirements. So, it, the system has developed in such a way that every, all of our districts build in X number of snow days, and districts that don't have as many just have additional days for break.
I think also, oh, I'm sorry. You know, trustee Lynch, I know you had brought this up a couple of meetings ago, and we talked about making sure that the resources were available to families on the website, and I know that, that that work was followed up on, and I remember seeing the information about it. So, I, I think we also have to be super cognizant of what we can do as a public school district, and one of the things that we cannot do is provide a gift of taxpayer money to individual families. So, we can't really unfortunately help with childcare for some families in the district, but not with other families. But what we can do is make sure that we're providing access to resources and information. And I think that leads us to, you know, a very obvious conversation about the website. You know, we need to, I would ask the communication committee to make that a priority, is, you know, a discussion about the website, and how we can make things more easily accessible. And making sure that families have ready access to what resources there are available, so that if they do need to provide childcare, where, how can they do that? Where can they do that? Can they get funding through Cornell? Is there grant money available to families, and there is for help with childcare? What are the tax benefits for families that have childcare? I mean, there's a lot of resources out there, and there is some initiative in New York State to address childcare. So, we may want to put some energy into that through the advocacy committee. I, I think that there's avenues here that we should look at and can look at, but what we can't look at is, is how we can give taxpayer money, because we cannot do that. So, we just need to be cognizant, and I also think that the towns in our district would all say that they do a really great job, and I, you know, I think we all valuable, value the work that they do, and are grateful that they're out there plowing and, and taking care of things, so that the rest of us can get in their way and make things harder on them. And, you know, oftentimes, just to be super clear about this, they're the ones who are saying to us, we cannot get the roads clear. And we do not suggest that you put your buses on the road. So, I think that's really important. You know, superintendent McLaren and Ms. Summer are up at, you know, three thirty in the morning, trying to make these decisions, and those decisions are not made blindly, they're made with the support of the highway superintendents from every town, who are very involved in these decisions, and are saying to us, this is what we're seeing, this is what we think you could do, but we don't think you should do this. You know, like, this is not made in a vacuum, so, trustee Wallace?
Well, but, but what, what you were getting at, like, we could, however, with our website, or with blasts, potentially provide, on those snow days, like an extra blast, like with childcare. Like, if there is last minute resources that are out there, theoretically, would that be?
Thanks, David, but we talked about ass- adding that link on the website, in your announcement about school being closed. So, that was what we, we came up with, I think, 'cause there's a link with all the resources, including two one one and other ways for parents to get more information.
I definitely wouldn't want anything else on the phone call. Like, I think that's too, like, if I could have less words at five o'clock in the morning, that's even better. Just close or open, that's all I want.
Go to sleep.
Okay, any other old business? The last, last piece of new business quickly is that trustee Bishop and I are going to be meeting with, at their request, with the cabinet from the Booster Club, to get some information from them, and to talk a little bit about collaboration, and then we have asked them to come and do a presentation to the board. They asked to meet with us first, so we're going to do that, and then ask them, they will come in and present to the board, and during that meeting, we can talk more about collaboration, and how we can support the excellent work that they're doing. Because Community Night was fantastic, and the response from the community has really been overwhelming with the work that they're doing, and, and they're working really hard, so I want to make sure we're supporting them however we can. Okay, any RFIs? Are you sure? Request for information from the superintendent. Valerie would like to adjourn, and she is the first to adjourn. And trustee Bishop, trustee Taylor are both second. And everybody's in favor. Thank you.